Halloween.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council for Tuesday, October 18th. Roll call. Councilmember Froyo.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
And Mayor Matina.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Spur, do you want to lead us?
Of course.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any urgency items? We have no urgency items, but we do have one change. The closed session item related to employee negotiations is needs to be removed.
I can barely hear you, Kelly.
I apologize.
It's okay.
The the closed session item related to employee negotiations needs to be pulled from the agenda this evening.
Okay.
And then Kelly, do we need to remove the employee introductions as well?
Oh, yes, I almost forgot. Thank you for the reminder. The employee introductions will be moved to the next meeting as the two employees.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as posted with the exceptions of items five B introduction of new employees and item nine two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Kelly, while we've got you, for the people that are online, do you have the instructions for them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone participating online and welcome to the City of Lakeport City Council meeting. All attendees tonight will be placed in listen only mode until opportunities for public comment are presented. If you wish to comment on an item, please use the raise your hand function when asked by clicking on the hand icon on your device. The organizer will take you off listen only mode when it is your turn to speak. You may also have to unmute yourself. In the event the above option does not function properly, you will have the opportunity to submit text questions by typing your questions into the chat pane of the control panel. Questions or comments not related to a specific agenda item should be presented during the general public comment time. Questions or comments related to a specific agenda item will be read by the organizer during the comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. Next is the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non controversial. They'll be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Let's see, the first item wave reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of September 20th. Approve the warrant register of September 27th. Adopt a resolution authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the Lakeport City Council and its legislative bodies pursuant to government code section 54953E. Approve the application 2022 024 with staff recommendations for the 2022 Clear Lake High School homecoming parade. The parade will be Friday at 8:00 PM, something new, so it'll be in the evening.
Thursday, actually.
Oh, Thursday. Thank you. Thursday. Approve the application 2022 025 with stack recommendations for the 2022 Halloween Parade.
Got it.
All right.
Who is that, George?
Receive and file the CDD quarterly report for the first quarter of the 2022 23 fiscal year. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for PLHA funding allocations in accordance with the five year plan. Adopt the resolution accepting construction of the Martin Street Apartments offsite improvement project by Pacific West Builders and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. Authorize the mayor signing the letter of support for Pacific West Communities, Inc. to apply for an infill infrastructure grant for the Bevan Street Senior Apartments. Would any council members like to pull any of the items? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a motion.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public presentations. Next item is public input. Any person may speak for three minutes on any item not on the above agenda. Would anyone? Come on up.
I'm gonna read most of what I have here.
Yeah, if you could pull that microphone down and introduce yourself. Perfect.
Okay, my name is Kim Walter and I live at 654 Third Street in Lakeport with my husband Sam. We've lived there for 27 years. I wanted to speak tonight about what we are finding to be the serious decline in downtown Lakeport neighborhoods. If you walk just about every street, you'll see clear violations of the city ordinances. There's overgrown vegetation, abandoned and inoperable vehicles, yards with junk and debris. And there are no signs that any steps to abate these nuisances has been taken. These violations tend to spread like a cancer from one property to another. And it's now affected our street in particular. There is a house across the street from my home, next door to our friends Kathy and Mike, across from our other friend Ramona and Jamie. This house is a drug house and I've talked to Mayor Matina about it. I've talked to Chief Frazmussen about it. I just want to bring it up again because it's becoming a huge problem. There are cars coming and going day and night. There were people walking in from town and as a matter of fact, today, there were two young guys that came up and went to the next door neighbor's door and started banging on their door and looking in the window because I think they thought they were at the drug house. And then they moved on. This is scary to me. We have cars parked in all different directions on the street in front of this house. Cars coming and going. I counted in an 18 day period and I'm not sitting out there counting cars. This is just walking by my window or door. There were 23 different cars during the daytime hours that are at this house. That's that's a lot of cars. The people that are coming and going from there are known criminals. They have drug records, burglary records, felony records. And these are the people that are coming into our neighborhood and I'm concerned for our safety and well being. The occupants of this property are also violating a number of the city ordinances by parking cars on dead grass, having gas cans out there. They have an outhouse out there because they their water was turned off. They are a fire hazard, a health hazard, a safety hazard, and they're destroying our neighborhood. They're devaluing our properties. And we need something done about it. I know this is not the forum. I know that that the the community development department is the and the police department are the ones that need to step in and remedy these violations, but I just wanted it brought up again with everyone to be aware of it and that we are begging you to do something about these people. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. So as we discussed, there are multiple actions and investigations going on with that. Did anyone call the police today when they? Okay, perfect. I just encourage you to keep letting us know.
Well, on that note, I did call the police and the dispatcher said to me, we already went up there today. So that was a response that I got.
Okay.
Not really what I wanted to.
Right, okay. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Cassandra Benitez and I live at 633 Third Street. I am right next door to the house that we're all talking about. It used to be where that house used to be the garage, so we're really close now that it's a own dwelling. We're really close to that violation house. There, like Kim said, there's cars coming in and out, different people. The house that the door got banged on was my house. No one was home. I have a six year old who crawls in my bed at night because they're they make a lot of noise. His bedroom's up at the front, so that's how he hears it better than we do. And it's just, and then I have a car that's on my property that's theirs. But I think because they we kind of share that spot, it's mostly on ours, but a little bit on theirs. So I don't know if there's anything we can do. But it's quite a nuisance to have them there. And they only showed up after the gentleman passed away. They didn't even know he was in the hospital or anything. They just moved right in.
Yeah, it's lousy.
Yeah. So we're just here to voice our opinion, let you guys know. I know Brad's working on it. I.
Yeah, we're making progress.
So we just wanted to let our voices.
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, by the way, so Kim and Cassandra, just to let you know, this is exactly what I tell people. I'm on the other side on the North Shore, on the lost continent. And whenever people have problem, you take it before the governing board and you let them know. So there's no plausible deniability. They know that it's going on. And in almost every case, people in authority like Kevin and the different departments will hand it down to the police chief and things will happen. The problem is, is that we have processes and things like that. But rest assured that you being here is a very important movement. And if there's anything like that, code violations or different types of drug trafficking or anything you see is illicit, the best thing to do is come here before your governing board because I guarantee you, when Kevin goes back to his office and and chief goes back to his office, things will happen. They just don't happen as fast as we'd like to. So thank you, Kim, and thank you Cassandra for coming down because we will eventually take care of it. It's just the wheels of of justice and of bringing people into conformance. Take a time. So thank you very much.
Hi, my, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Carol Bice and I live in the same neighborhood. And I love those words, Mr. Parlet. But so I don't know the exact address, but on the at the end of Fourth Street, there is a residence and I would say for the last 10 years, it's it's been shambles. It's been, there's only room for one car to go through at a time. And I know they've red tagged it, but it almost seems like it's gotten worse since they've red tagged it. There were city workers there today moving the chain link fence that are around the property around, but they didn't want to talk to me about anything that was going on. And then later on walked down, it was clear nothing had happened. And the gentleman that lives there moves truck around with also full of junk around the the surrounding streets just to move it around because it's just so full. And I know you've heard of this. This has been going on for years. So it's hard to take that, what you said to heart. So can you expound on that a little bit about how how we're supposed to have faith that something's going to be done when when we see this example of over a decade of this kind of blight?
Well, the the thing is, so this has been reported continuously over the last nine years. Because knowing the chief and the city manager and the previous city manager, I have a hard time believing that. But this is the place where it starts and we have accountability to you. And I assure you after your comments tonight that something will be done. And I mean, we we have the only so many tools in our toolbox, you know, Prop 47, AB 109, Prop 57. They've just disarmed our police force and there's a lot of restrictions on things that we can and cannot do that seem pretty simple. But they're not as simple as they once were. They once were. And so I can assure you that these things are in the hopper. It's just, you know, there's different things like priorities, but I I totally feel your pain. I see it all the time. I drive all the way around the North Shore and code enforcement has got their hands full and it does work on complaint driven. So the more complaints, the more people do it, the more likely that something's going to happen. But I'm sorry that it hasn't happened sooner and I think 10 years is unacceptable. I totally agree with you and I would question someone like me that said that and it didn't happen right away.
Wait a minute, excuse me, Madam Mayor, can I take crack at this also?
Well, we need to be careful because
Okay.
I think
Okay.
we're getting a little too deep.
Well.
In it. So yeah.
It was across from your house. I'll bet it wouldn't have been.
No, this is the, I mean, I'll just turn to our attorney and ask her how much further can we take this? This is coming up on a violation of the Brown Act if we continue commenting on it. So I would suggest that this be an item if council would like to put onto the next agenda that can be properly discussed.
Yeah.
You want to take a shot at it?
So I'm not sure if this assists. We did have a community development staff report on the consent calendar that was the status of the last quarter. I don't know if it's possible to open up the conversation a little bit. If you want, I can hand you that staff report and then we can make kind of a conversation. But the consent calendar did include the quarterly report for code enforcement, Ava, and planning items if we wanted to go backwards.
And or I can I can offer to the council, I mean, if the, you know, there there has been a lot of changes in code enforcement over the past a few months, we have been aggressively going after things in a different fashion. We've a lot more abandoned vehicles being tagged. I'm very aware of both of these situations. We have daily, daily contact with them. But I mean, if we if the council feels or desires, we can certainly have maybe an overall code enforcement sort of update item on a future agenda.
That would be completely acceptable. So everyone's prepared and can bring all the information back at another meeting time.
Email me, please.
Thank you.
Um, we would stay also though for specific cases, open code enforcement cases. We we will not be able to discuss because it's an ongoing investigation. But overall,
Good.
if council would like us to bring back a item to discuss the process.
That would be great.
Thank you. And the only thing I would add is would that include an update on the status of the right of way ordinance? Which I think was one of the things we wanted to talk about.
The right of way or the property maintenance?
Property maintenance ordinance.
Um.
We could, I mean, we could, I mean, that is a an overall council goal. It's been on there. There we could, we could include, you know, some aspects of that in that update.
Because I think that's one of the tools we're looking for and it is a council goal. So.
Yeah, I I think those would.
Definitely want to highlight where we're at, but if we're going to talk about where we're going.
Sure.
It'd be on there.
I I think that makes good sense.
Okay, great. Anyone else from the public? On any item, not on the agenda.
I do have a hand raised online if we can take.
Well, no, come on up first and then we'll go to the person online.
See, a council member.
New old council member.
We were filled the spot through the end of the year and Councilmember Spurs are former council members filling in me a spot.
Right, well, we'll be seeing a lot of each other, I'm afraid. And so I want to confirm that I have three minutes to talk about anything not on the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct.
I might be impinging on the Brown Act because my wife had warned me about that. But I do want to talk about Parkside. And this is more historical than anything else and it will become present day shortly. So in 2005, it was the planning department allowed Skellenger Brothers to build or start a development through no fault of their own. The economy dropped and they couldn't continue. So now fast forward to to today, they want to, they want to change everything. They want to put high density apartment buildings back there. And we've already talked about some of the dangers of fire and traffic and all those things, but at the time that they were given permission to build what they were going to build back there, the economy was booming. It was it was totally on fire. This economy is not nearly as strong as it was back then. So what happens if they start this project with the high density units, 176 units back there? You know the numbers, I'm sorry. And they say, well, you know, we just can't finish this. And and you as a council have already agreed, we're going to change the zoning. It's R3 now and it will be R3 forever. And there's nothing anybody can do about it after that. And so I'm just, you know, saying what happens if they walk away from another project? Thank you.
Oops. Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Don Bays.
Thank you.
I live in Parkside.
Thank you, Mr. Bays. Anyone else from the public? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Sam Walter. I'm live on 654 Third Street in Lakeport. I know you've heard all the the complaints. I know that this council and Chief of Police are aware of these complaints. I wouldn't begin to tell you how to do your job and I know that you have it. What I would like to see happen, if it's possible, that the people that this is most affecting can be made aware of what we, you have knowledge of the problem. So what I'm looking for is a written diagnosis and the action you're going to take to abate this. I know you're absorbing this and your laws, I get that. But we're not, there's not enough response. We don't get a direct response. We just, you receive it, you acknowledge there's a problem. What I'd like to see, can we get some kind of written progress report on what you can and cannot do? I don't think that's a lot to, you know, I don't think that's a lot to ask for. Because we don't, other than making a complaint and then it goes away, we get no response initiated by the council or anybody else. It's all directed one way and it feels like, I'm saying it feels like it's going to a black hole of apathy. And it's not acceptable. So I would like a response, if possible, in a timely fashion of what your course of action is. And if you agree that this is a problem and what have you done in the past and what you intend to do? That's all I've got to say.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Walter. Jenny, it gets kind of into like an employee's file, like you can't share everything, but how can you share?
And I'm sorry, Alex, because I did have these conversations with David about open code enforcement. And we understand where it goes in and and what the gentleman is saying and they're living it every day. But open code enforcement cases that may need higher level of abatement have to remain confidential during the course of those investigations. And so that's kind of where we're at with this. What council is requesting is that we bring back an item with the process. And I think that that would be acceptable to just show like what it is we do when we first receive code enforcement case, what is our process? How long do we give people?
How it works.
How it works.
Okay.
And how long it could take. It definitely is longer than what we want it to take, but it is an ongoing investigation and it should be, specific cases will need to be treated that way.
Okay, so for that neighborhood, they'll definitely want to come when we have that.
Yeah, and we we can certainly take a look at, we have the contact information for almost everybody that came up and spoke this evening. We'll make sure to reach out to them specifically of when when that is agendized so that they can come and attend.
Okay.
And that's just what I was going to add to. We can, we can outline that process. It is in the municipal code. But it reads like it's in the municipal code. So we'll, we'll bring that out, try and, you know, kind of add it into a more easily digestible kind of flow chart aspect. If this, then that and outline, but Jenny's absolutely correct. There's only so much detail we're going to be able to provide on an individual case.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, one additional thing, if I may, I'd just like to point out that when someone says we are aware, I'm not sure about the rest of the council members. I was totally unaware of any of this. And so to say that we're aware of it and we're just like letting it go, rough shot along. Some of the staff may be aware of it and they're working on it, but to say all the council members are aware of this problem and seem to be ambivalent or disrespectful, that that is not the case in my case. And I would bet that in the rest of the council, they probably didn't know about it. Stacy heard about it from a phone call, but I don't know that we were aware of it. So that's a little stretch. So if I were aware of it, I would be making some phone calls and doing whatever, move things along. But obviously we can't move along as fast as we can, but I knew nothing of this.
So I, it was, I think it was in the meeting notes.
And the reporting is very important. We'll bring that in the staff report that complaint driven items have a difference. Well, I'm going, I'm I'm going to go too far. We'll have a future staff report that outlines what our process is.
But in the meantime, I would encourage everybody, I mean, continue to contact the police. Continue to contact community development when you do observe these things. I mean, that all goes to build the record. I know sometimes it may feel like it's a futile aspect of just, you know, you feel like you're doing the same thing day in and day out. I was disappointed to hear the response that you got from dispatch. We will talk to them about that. But it does all go to building the record. So I do encourage you to continue to to file your complaints so that we can build that record. It is important.
Can can I make one last? I just might like to make a general comment. I can I, it's just, just a comment. Many people in the room here are aware that I've been through this. I've been exactly through. I've been on your side. And I know, I know exactly what it feels like. All I'm going to offer is I wouldn't mind meeting with your group, your neighborhood watch or wherever it is. We could pick a day and a time and meet over at round table like we used to do. And if you want to hear some strategies for working in the neighborhood that won't get you into trouble, I'd I'd love to share them with you. So you can find, my name is Michael Froyo and you can find my email address on the website or I can be found at mfrio@cityoflakeport.com.
Okay, let's go to the person online.
Okay, we have one hand raised online. I'm going to butcher the name. I think it's Daria Sayad of the California Department of something.
Yeah, you got it right. This is Daria Sayad from California Department of Insurance. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and I'm happy to be with you today to give you an update on the work we have been doing on your behalf. I want to touch base with the safer from wildfire framework and interagency partnership between Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the emergency response and readiness agencies and Governor Gavin Newsom's administration. Its purpose is to protect lives, homes and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. We are working with CAL FIRE, CAL OES, Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the California Public Utilities. So our department is using every tool available to improve insurance for our communities. That's our goal. Based on the direct experience of first responders and the latest research on wildfires, the partnership created a consistent approach to reducing risk with a list of achievable, certifiable and effective actions to help make existing homes and businesses safer from wildfires. It's a ground up approach. We call it one, two, three plan. Number one is to protect the structures such as making sure your roof and vents are up to code. Number two, the immediate surroundings such as brush too close to your home or are there flammable items stored under your act? And number three, the community involving entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading to other homes and businesses in the neighborhood. And good news is that, that yesterday, the California Department of Insurance got the approval. The regulation is now a state law and enshrined in the California Code of Regulations. The press release, the press release was out yesterday to notify the public and the insurance industry. Each insurance company have one 80 days to submit their plans to the department for approval. Once approved by the department, they will be in place. And besides that, I just want to come here and let you know that I'm your outreach analyst. And at the department, we have several other programs like California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, which is a state sponsored program. And in Lake County, the premium start with 263 per annum regardless of the immigration status. So we just want to be here that Department of Insurance is here for any of your constituents need, any insurance need. And our callback time is two minutes if you don't pick up your call. Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Said, this is Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport. If you wouldn't mind leaving your contact information in the chat box, I'd love to discuss some of these items with you a little further. We have a Risk Reduction Authority, a Joint Powers Authority here in the county. And I'd love to see if you wouldn't mind coming in, presenting this information directly to them.
It would be our pleasure. I will do that. Thank you so much.
The missions completely overlap, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online?
No.
Anyone else in the room? Public input? All right. Next, we have a proclamation, a presentation of a proclamation declaring October twenty twenty two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have members of the Lake Family Resource here. Why don't you come up to the mic with me? Why don't you guys kind of face everyone? All your hard work. Is this on? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
You can pull it out, though, and you need to.
That's probably good. All right, a proclamation designating the month of October twenty twenty two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Lakeport. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children and men of all racial, cultural and economic backgrounds. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and long lasting. And whereas, in the past twelve months, Lake County law enforcement responded to over two hundred and fifty three incidents of domestic violence, including men, women and children. In the past twelve months, the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office have served three hundred and thirty six victims of domestic violence. Lake Family Resource Center responded to nine hundred and forty two crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered a hundred and sixteen domestic violence victims and their children for a total of four thousand two hundred ninety two bed nights. Whereas it is crucially important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity. And whereas family violence is a community problem, stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. And whereas many organizations such as the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate October twenty twenty two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you for joining us, everyone. I know you probably want to say something. And your pretty proclamation, we're going to get over to you.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to the Lakeport City Council for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and shedding light on this very real issue in our county. We will also be having a Power of the Purple Walk this Saturday, the twenty second, beginning at nine AM at our Kelseyville office. So please join us and help us spread awareness. Anyone else? Anyone else from your group?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for everything that you do. Round of applause. Hey, our next presentation is in appreciation of former council member Mireya Turner's contribution to the city. Come on up, Mireya.
I was just thinking today about how I can chase down, you know, Congress members and talk about Lake County, and I can speak to industry leaders, but when it's like my name on the agenda, I'm like, oh.
We'll get you up here. You're stuck at the mic for a few. But first, presented by the City of Lakeport in grateful appreciation for your dedicated service, Mireya G. Turner, Lakeport City Council, twenty fourteen to twenty twenty two, Mayor, twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Listen to everybody.
Oh.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Get your block there. Here we go. More. There we go.
All right, Kevin?
Sure, I'll take a, I'll take my first shot at her. We're, Maria, we're, we're, we know that the county gained a very great employee, and you're going to do some fantastic work over there with the Community Development Department. In fact, we've already been in contact quite a bit on a number of different items. I think we're meeting with you on Thursday on a very important community item. But as great the work you're doing over there, it is a big loss to us to have you go. But at the same time, your service here has been, has been wonderful to us. And I just wanted to state that we always have respected your supportive staff. You always sort of given us the benefit of the doubt when you hear something to give us a call. At least get the, at least get the other side of the story, and we can start fixing things up from there. I've also very much admired your, your eye to implementation. You know, public policy in itself is sometimes unwieldy, and you've always had a knack for going, well, okay, that's, that's a great vision, that's a great idea. But how do we actually make it work on the ground? And I've enjoyed working with you through those, through those tidbits and getting into the weeds. And I know that I still get to, that's the, that's the wonderful thing, it's just not up here on, on the dais as such. You've been a huge advocate for the City of Lakeport, not only in your place up on this specific dais, but all the different organizations that you've, that you've represented on behalf of the City of Lakeport, on behalf of Cal Cities for our Redwood Empire Division, through the League Legislative Committees on the board, your advocacy for National League of Cities items. And we're, we're too often forgotten as a small rural city, and you have made sure that that has not been the case. And, and that has paid off in dividends. It's helped us keep updated on, on the, the various items that are coming at us from all different directions. And it's been a huge piece on why we've been able to stay proactive on pension obligation funds, on, on different grant programs and, and different things that have, have made sure that, that Lakeport is getting its due representation. And for that, I'm very thankful for your leadership. And I know that your leadership has, has paid off to your other fellow council members. I won't speak for them. I'm sure they have plenty to add to it. But it's been, it's been a pleasure to, to serve as your Community Development Director for five or six years, and then as your City Manager for the past two years. And I am very excited that we'll continue to get to work together in your new capacity as Community Development Director at the County of Lake, which we already have.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to say that when I was in City Council before, Maria, you helped me out quite a bit. And the thing that I appreciate the most is when I became the mayor. I do not like the phrase whereas. So you offered to read all my proclamations for me, because every time I say whereas, I just start to think of funny things. And I appreciate all the help that you gave me and all the guidance. And I hope you have a great life.
Mm hmm. Madam Mayor, I've been up here for ten years, give or take. And I've dealt with a lot of different council members and mayors and so forth. And it's not very often that we have such a young, attractive woman that has such judgment and is able to sift through all the complexities and do it in such a way that you have this earnest love for the community, and you seek out all the different alternatives, and you look for all of the downtrodden and disenfranchised. But yet you still keep the main citizens in your heart. And you just have a judgment that is just very, very rare. And you've been one of the absolute best council members I've ever seen in my tenure, and it was a pleasure to work with you. And when I heard you were going away, I was like, wow, that's going to be a huge loss. But knowing that we have at least one person at the county that has good judgment and has all the good things going for him, I'm really looking forward to some great things that may be spawned by just your resonance with the rest of the people over there, because there's, there's just no one like you. And it's been a real pleasure working with you, and I think you're just one of the best.
Thank you.
Well, it's my turn. And what I'd like to say is, Mireya is calm and thoughtful, and she's a good listener. And those are all really good traits, whether she's sitting here on the City Council or she's working her new job as Community Development Director of County of Lake. And I would like to tell the people that are here that are remaining that have had neighborhood problems, that when I first walked into this room, I came in the same way. So I expect to see some of you up here in a few years. Anyways, Mireya, at my invitation, came out to my neighborhood. And I walked her through it, and she's come out to my neighborhood probably three times. She came out with our former supervisor, Tina Scott. And she came through, she cared, she listened, she looked, and she was able to, to see the progress that we were making out there. And I hope to be able to do that for the people that are having a hard time on Third Street. So aside from that, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to know you and to have briefly worked with you. And I look forward to seeing you often down at your new stomping grounds, the county.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maria, my fellow, my fellow nerd, my fellow policy wonk. I appreciate your thoughtfulness, your attention to detail, your ability to surprise. You stumped me once or twice, and I think it was a good thing that that happened. You made me think sometimes I get so sure in my own thought patterns, it takes some ages. You literally did not slap me upside the head, but you have occasionally gotten my attention. And I think that's a very valuable quality, because you can do so gracefully, whereas I cannot, I cannot do that. I appreciate the time we've spent on the council together. I do look forward, hopefully, in the very near future to working with you in a, in a different realm. And I think that'll be exciting, says one nerd to another.
Mireya, it's been an absolute pleasure and honor working next to you for, what, the last eight years? Weren't supposed to leave so soon, but I have really appreciated your calm, thoughtful words. And your active participation with the league has really allowed us to act early and make such good policy. But probably my fondest memory is when we were both chairing meetings for the league, and you were chairing the Environmental Committee, a huge room with probably a hundred people. And I was next door, chairing the Housing Committee in a huge room with a hundred people. And our director walked by and she peeked in, and I could see her pointing at me. And then she went next door and was pointing at you and was so proud that you were out there for this little rural community. And there we were. So you'll really be missed. Thank you for everything. And I feel like I've gained a friend.
Thank you.
We've, we've got lots of projects and accomplishments over the past seven plus years with, with Maria. But I wanted to point out a couple, too, that we didn't quite finish, but they're not stopping. And you know, you're, you were a big leader in getting established the diversity, equity, inclusion aspect of there, and we've partnered in moving that forward with the county. That's certainly going to continue. And your, your leadership in pushing us forward on looking at, you know, upgrading our existing wastewater treatment to a greater recycling capacity, whether that be to purple pipe, or whether that be for groundwater recharge, the seeds that you've, you've planted there, we're pressing those forward. And we will certainly be inviting you back along the process as we, as we move those, those endeavors forward. And I know that you're still absolutely involved in the diversity, equity, inclusion in your new, your new position as well. So definitely look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you. My turn.
We do have one person online, if we're going to allow them to speak.
Yep.
Terry Logston, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I, my name is Terry Logston, resident of Lakeport. And I just want to say that I've known Mireya for a very long time. I'm speaking in a personal capacity. And her engagement with the city and bringing along residents to join in to community events and her leadership with the League of California Cities and her dedication to promoting the City of Lakeport, promoting the needs and of, of rural areas has been admirable. I miss that she's no longer going to be on the city council, but I'm very, very happy that she is in her new position.
Terry, we lost power for a minute. We're glad you're still on there, but
I am.
Want to back up and kind of start from the beginning?
Sure. Is it dark in the council room? Oh, I just wanted, I just want to say that her leadership and bringing along the residents of the City of Lakeport into, you know, smaller community events has been admirable. Her leadership with the League of California Cities and raising the bar and awareness of the needs of rural communities like Lake County has been admirable. I'm, I'm very sorry that she's no longer with the City of Lakeport as an elected official. I'm very glad she's still advocating for our rural areas or the County of Lake. So thank you, Mireya, and congratulations on your new position. And we miss you with the City of Lakeport.
Thank you.
All right, take it away.
Okay. So there are a few things that I'm very thankful for. I am thankful for the, the incredible staff that we have here, that, you know, over the last eight years, we've been through celebrations. We've been through disasters, we've been through pretty much everything in between. And throughout all of that, the dedication and the positive attitude and the resilience, the problem solving of our staff has just never stopped impressing me. The dedication of our law enforcement officers is top notch. And in the ride alongs that I went through, I was always really impressed with how they treated the people that they were approaching as, as actual people and as members of our community. And that's so valuable. I am thankful for the cool council that I got to serve with, where we come from such different backgrounds with different areas of interest and different expertise that that variation, I feel, makes us, makes y'all now a deep council that works together well and gets things done for our, our community. I'm thankful to the Lakeport community for giving me the honor of representing you for the last eight years. I'll always be a Lakeport girl. I'm not far away. I am, I will continue to look for opportunities to work with the city in the future. Because as Kevin told us, probably even before he was City Manager, it's, and I'm going to get it wrong, because I always get these analogies wrong, but it's, it's the, the rising seas lift all ships, something like that. So I got the gist of it, and I've always remembered it. And so now that I'm working in the county, I still remember, you know, we, we may be a large county area wise, but we're actually one big, small town. And so I think as we keep that in mind, working together will, will help everybody in our community. And one last thank you, I wanted to thank everybody for having a Zoom meeting, because my parents are listening. Thank you.
All right, public hearings, Community Development Block Grant closeouts. Jenny, is this you? Nick?
Yeah, I think I'm taking this.
Yeah, I think I'm taking this one. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and, uh, city council members. Uh, tonight you're being asked to hold a public hearing and consider, uh, any public comments and approve, uh, the closeout for three CDBG grants. Um, the first, uh, seventeen CDBG one, two, zero, one, eight, uh, was a general, uh, general NOFO grant, which, uh, we applied. Of that, of that grant, we ended up loaning, uh, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, to local businesses. And also, uh, use that funding to finance the Forbes Creek neighborhood study, which, uh, you guys have gotten, uh, a big taste of recently. Uh, the second, uh, eighteen CDBG one, two, nine, one, two was also a general, a general NOFO grant for. Um, offsite infrastructure supportive housing, um, in the amount of about six hundred sixty thousand dollars. Uh, those improvements were completed, um, in relation to Martin Street, uh, phase one and phase two housing developments. Uh, I think they included some underground, some sidewalk, uh, some storm drain retention. Um, and some retaining raw work in that, in that area. Um, and the third. Uh, was twenty CDBG CV one, zero, 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 one, nine. Uh, and that was a part of the first, uh, federal stimulus package that came through, um, CDBG. The, the city applied this funding to, um, the commercial kitchen improvements at the Silvera Community Center. Um, and this project also has been completed. Um, just the public, this public hearing was noticed appropriately and published on October fourth, um, in advance of this meeting. So with that.
Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Um, any questions before we open the public hearing?
Just compliments. We, we got good value for all of this. The Forbes Creek study in particular stands out. We're going to be milking that for a while. So, so thanks again to staff for pointing us in the right, right direction and council for getting the approvals going.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Nick, is there anyone online?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. And no one in the room? So go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back for comments and a motion.
Did that cover all three motions, what we just did?
Take, I think we have to take three separate motions.
I know it's three separate motions, but did we do the one hearing to cover all three?
Yes.
It's one motion with all.
Okay.
I just see one motion.
All right. I see what, oh, no, I see three. I see three bullet points.
There's three.
Let me see one motion.
See one.
I only see.
Well, let me try making a motion. You tell me if I'm wrong. Uh, Madam Mayor, I move, we approve the closeout of CDBG grant, CDBG seventeen dash CDBG twelve, oh, on one, eight. And direct staff to submit the final closeout documents to HCD and ditto for CDBG grant eighteen. CDBG twelve, nine, one, two, twelve, oh, one, eight. And ditto for grant CDBG twenty dash CDBG dash CV one dash zero, 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 one, nine. Yes, that's my motion.
And direct staff to submit the final closeout document stage.
I, I said the ditto before that.
Oh, you said that already? I'm sorry.
Dittoing.
Okay.
I, I'll read it all verbatim if you want, but I think that gets the substance of it.
That's it.
We got it.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have community development block grant amendment.
That one is me. Thank you, Mayor Matina and council members. City council is being asked to amend resolution twenty eight, twenty, which was adopted on August seventh. Seventeenth, twenty twenty one and authorize the city manager to apply for two hundred and forty one thousand, three, wait. Three hundred ninety-four dollars for CDBG, uh, CV phase two and three. To purchase and install HVAC equipment and upgrade the electrical panel to serve the Silvera Community Center. Due to escalating costs, the engineer's estimate is now proposed to be three hundred thousand dollars for that project. From time to time, the city does receive program income from the replacement or from the repayment of previous CDBG contracts. Some of which Nick just mentioned were in the form of loans that have been repaid. Um, as of October eleventh, twenty twenty two, the CDBG program income fund has approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Staff is recommending that the contract be amended to include all of the program income so that an additional hundred thousand can be added to. HVAC equipment and the, uh, electrical upgrades required. For that project and that the remaining hundred and thirty thousand be used for facility ADA upgrades. There's a couple of things that, um. We're, we're starting the list of all of the items at the Silvera Community Center that need to be upgraded and some of those do include ADA upgrades. And so with those funds, we could start ticking off that list. Um, there's a couple of things to note. The question was raised about resolution twenty eight, twenty. Uh, section two had language that the city hereby approved the use of program income in an amount not to exceed zero dollars. That was the case when council adopted this back in August of twenty twenty one. But we've had this conversation so many times before that HCD has standardized resolutions. That you're not allowed to deviate from. And so when we put it in the twenty eight, twenty resolution, that zero. Program income dollars were going to be dedicated to the project. That was a true case back in twenty twenty one. We are now coming back for this amendment to add two hundred and thirty thousand to that project. Um, I would also like to know, I misspelled Silvera. I did it very consistently and misspelled it three times. So with that, staff suggests that, uh, the city council opened the public hearing to receive comments. And adopt the draft resolution that would authorize the city manager to sign the statement of assurances. And to submit a contract amendment and program income funding allocation for the CDBG CV two and three funding. Happy to answer questions.
I'm convinced that there are program income gremlins in this world because I swear every time that we apply for a grant, there is no program income.
Yeah.
We have none. Then as soon as we are ready to start expending funds on a project. Somebody will come in and pay off a loan. And then all of a sudden we have program income and we're in this position where we have to. Apply that to the project, which is great. It's not, it, it just, it creates a little bit of a, a paperwork, uh, fumble for us to, to kind of work through. Um, but that's the, that's the precise reason for the program income. It's money that's loaned out. As it gets paid back, it's supposed to come back in, um, and, uh, and be utilized once again for, um. Certified or, uh, um, allowable CDBG uses. And, um, we know, we've, we've been very clear on this from the get go with the, um, the Silvera Community Center that, um. Getting the HVAC units and stuff is definitely a primary piece to getting the doors back open, but there still remains a number of larger items and. Those big price tag items are ADA improvements, particularly the restrooms. And, uh, general access improvements to the building itself. So this will go a long way. I don't think it's going to solve the, um, issue completely, but it's, um. It's better than zero. Um, so we'll be able to, uh, to apply these funds to, uh, to help offset those, those costs, uh, to get that important. Uh, community feature available to the community.
Perfect. Any questions?
What about the mistake in the resolution?
What wasn't a mistake in the twenty?
Do we have to update it?
That's why we have a draft resolution in front of you. It was the existing resolution that said zero program income. The new resolution identifies the two hundred and thirty thousand as well as, um, it has a table of where those. Funds are going to be spent.
And that's in there right now.
So the draft resolution is correct. Technically, the twenty eight, twenty was correct because in twenty twenty one, we didn't have program income.
Yeah.
Perfect. Anyone from the public? Anyone online?
Seeing no hands raised.
Okay, bring it back for final comment or motion?
Was that the public hearing? Open the public hearing.
Oh, is this one a public hearing too?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone online?
No hands raised.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and now bring it back. Hey, if there's no further comments, we'll take a motion.
Move we adopt the draft resolution authorizing the city manager to sign necessary amendment documents, including the proper spelling of Silvera. For the state community development block grant Corona Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act rounds two and three.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is our outdoor dining design guidelines.
Yes. Um, thank you, Mayor Matina and council members. The city council is being requested to hold a public hearing. To consider amending the Lakeport Municipal Code to incorporate outdoor dining design guidelines. Uh, the community development department published an outdoor dining and design survey for the city of Lakeport residents, business owners and visitors. The survey consisted of seven questions and staff received a total of six hundred and thirty eight responses. Um, our largest so far. The survey allowed staff to gather input on the preferred design standards from which the outdoor dining guidelines were created. On September fourteenth, twenty twenty two, the planning commission recommended approval to the city council. Staff proposed the guidelines be adopted by resolution with the text amendment to the zoning ordinance. We did a similar thing when we did the out. Um, the objective design standards as well as street improvements are adopted by resolution with a note in. The zoning ordinance or it, with a note in the municipal code. To reference what was adopted by resolution. So doing the same thing, that's our recommendation. Um, other recommendations include that the businesses utilizing the emergency temporary use zoning permits. Uh, be provided no more than three months. We have about five still, uh, no, we have six. We have six out there that are still using. The temporary use zoning permits, that they be provided no more than three months to submit an application. And no more than six months to finalize the construction before the city would remove the water filled barricades that are currently serving as traffic protectors. For businesses that don't submit an application, the city would remove the barricades at the three month timeframe. This also kind of lines up with Newsom's order that came out, um, did it come out today? Uh, that the emergency COVID guidelines will end in February of twenty twenty three. An area that was not addressed in the guidelines is the payment of fees. Planning commission approved that the outdoor dining would be approved through the zoning permit process, which is a hundred and ninety dollars and two cents. And for those unable or those not wanting to, um, utilize the design guidelines. There's a process included in there that they could submit an architectural and design review application. It's seven hundred and forty six dollars and ninety eight cents for a minor architectural and design review. And two thousand nine hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty six cents for, uh, regular architectural and design review. The guidelines do not include that on-street dining receipt, or the guidelines do include that on-street dining particularly receive an annual permit. So that we can ensure that insurance requirements are met. And as well as inspection of the street drainage system. And so we wanted to have a continual, uh, way to evaluate those. Staff also did not propose whether or not a business should utilize, or should pay to utilize the sidewalk and or parking space. The survey did include the question, do you feel businesses should pay for the use of the public space of? Six hundred and thirteen responses were received. Fifty six point one percent responded no, uh, that the city should not. Pay or that the city should not require a fee for businesses to utilize that space. When reviewing other cities that had incorporated their standards, those that required an annual fee typically were cities that were going to have a loss of revenue. From on-street parking meters. Because of that, staff is requesting direction from council on the matter of an annual fee assessment for those that want to utilize the parking or the sidewalk. Uh, with that information, staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing to receive comments and provide direction to staff.
I just quickly add, I think, um, uh, the most valuable piece in this whole process that's helped us get to this point. Um, was that survey. Um, we got a, a ton of response, I think over, over seven hundred?
Six hundred and thirty eight.
Six hundred and thirty eight responses, uh, that was very assistive in helping us to, um, develop these guidelines. And, um, and it was very overwhelming that the community wanted to see, uh, this, this opportunity take place. Um, but also very overwhelmingly that, uh, the orange barricade sort of look was not, uh, reflective of what we wanted to see in our downtown community. Um, so it, it kind of, it, it moves us forward here. Um, I know there's, there's lots to discuss and we can certainly open the public hearing. Um, but I, I just wanted to add a, a couple of, of points. Uh, this, this. Guidelines gets, it breaks it down into three separate parts. I think like Jenny said, there's private property, uh, dining, much similar like Park Place right here. Uh, downtown where their outdoor activities are all taking place in the, um, on private property. Their sidewalk dining and then the, uh, the one that it seems to be the most contentious aspect is the, the, uh, the park lets or the onsite. On-street, uh, dining opportunities. Um. We council, uh, member, uh, Harlett and I attended a, a workshop, uh, while. We were down at the Cal Cities Conference that, um, uh, kind of looked at, uh, addressing a lot of the safety needs in here. Uh, we do have some maybe suggested items that might be able to strengthen that up as we go forward. And I just also wanted to point out at the way it's outlined right now, um, all three of these items would be. Uh, done and approved through the zoning permit process. And, um, I don't know if that warrants some. Greater discussion, uh, from your council on whether or not you think that's, uh, an adequate review process, but I'll leave that, um. For discussion and, um, and for public comment.
Thank you, Kevin. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this item, come on up. Aren't you guys here for that? Do you want to come tell us your thoughts?
I'm Deanne Padell from the Gaslight. Um, we just hope that you approve it and we don't have a problem paying a fee. You know, as long as it's, we can afford to do it. And I think it's great for the community. I think it's great for social. Social life for people to eat outside and see people and it's great for the businesses on the blocks because people. Come to outside dining, they look around, they look in people's windows. Um. I know that there was three or four different designs. Uh, I don't know if we're going to be allowed to choose one of the designs or they all have to be the same. We hope that it's chosen that we don't have to use umbrellas because we have gone through probably a dozen umbrellas this year already. And it's, it's kind of expensive. Um. Pretty much that's it. And we hope that you guys find us maybe a grant or something like that to help us pay for it. Thank you.
Jenny, do you want to describe the, the pergolas and?
So there were, um. Eight designs that were included in the survey. There were three of those designs that just by far the number of, um. Cause we gave everyone the option, pick your top three, those top three, uh, and I don't have the numbers and I'm sorry in front of me. It were significant. Uh, one of them was, uh, it would have some landscaping. Um, it had planters and it had rails and wires kind of going through it. And so that one was very similar to. Looking kind of boat dock. That's what we liked about the wires and that's why we included it in the survey. There was another one that just had variation of planter heights. And so it had some low planters and then it kind of escalated up and had. Um, some other planters. One of the designs did include a pergola, um, on the street. We were surprised. That that one received the number of votes that it did. The number four, uh, design. Really came in substantially lower. And so that's why we felt confident taking those three designs to the planning commission. Um, and they said rather than us have something that was so restrictive, that was also a question that was included in the survey. Do you want this to be, um, uh, I don't, we didn't use the word restrictive. I now I wish I would have looked at the survey before I did this. Um, we included the words, did you want a similar theme throughout or did you want to allow for the flexibility? The survey showed that they wanted to have flexibility in them. And because of that, we included those three design styles. And then planning commission said, put those three design styles in the design guidelines. Um, they were the ones that said if they could match this similarly to go ahead and have it done by a zoning permit application. I guess that's a pretty far, um. Uh, difference from planning commissions that we've had in the past that have wanted to see items. Uh, so that's the way that we brought that forward.
Okay.
And, and I would just add to that, the design guidelines also add the flexibility, like Jenny said, that, um, if somebody wanted to deviate with this with, uh. um, if somebody wanted to deviate with this with the, a design that maybe does not specifically fit into one of the three identified categories, there is a process to allow for that creativity to still go through. Um, it just wouldn't be a zoning permit outline that they, that they would have the opportunity to request an architectural design review and and, and have that design uh feature reviewed and um, and weighed in on. So it's
We also required that if you wanted on-street dining, um you couldn't have private open space. So for anyone that had private open space, that was where they would be required to have it. Three fifty North was a great example. They have a patio area in the back. Well, how we did it in the temporary was they were allowed to still have it on the sidewalk, but not take up one of the parking stalls. And so we do have it in these standards that if you can do outdoor dining, that you don't get to take a parking stall. But if you want to come back and have that question uh on the waterfront, uh recently sold, uh wine tasting is, is proposing to go in there. They want to have outdoor dining or on-street dining on the parking, but they also have private open space. And so in that case, they would need to request from uh Planning Commission through Architectural and Design Review. Uh, we have not seen an application for that. And so I'm, you know, just speculating. But in that case, we do currently have three parking stalls that are used in the downtown area for on-street dining. But we, we did try to put in different things that we've heard along the way. This has been, this has gone to council, this has gone to Planning Commission, this is, we've heard a lot.
If you follow the guidelines and you willing to do one of these things, you can just go and get a permit and do it.
A zoning permit application would be approved at the staff level.
Okay.
And I would assume that someone would go out and make sure it did meet all the, all the guidelines, correct?
All the parameters. We do have some suggested language changes, particularly to crash, crash attenuation barriers and barriers that are built explicitly to stop vehicle incursion. I think the League of Cities was the week that we put out the Planning Commission staff report. And so that is um, uh we do have language to propose that change because I guess that was a topic of conversation at League of Cities.
Okay, anyone else from the public, Laurel?
Good evening.
Hi, Ariel. My name is Laurel McCarthy and I own Studio One Twenty-Seven on Main Street. And I was, have a few questions. Um, so for the, I'm confused why the people who still um, who have outdoor dining in the back are not allowed to have on-street dining? Because I was under the uh oppression that the outdoor dining was to create community. And so how come people who bought a building with outdoor dining are not allowed to have the same uh privileges as people who purchase buildings without them?
Is that your only question?
No, I have lots of questions. That's one of them. Yeah. Okay. Well, I wrote them down in case you can't remember them all. Um, how many are you going to be allowed per block? I would like to know because that um multiple, some blocks like the block I want to have multiple restaurants. At one point you had said all businesses were going to be able to have them. Is that still a possibility? And if it is, um, are, and you limit the businesses, then how, how are you going to figure out who can have them? The right-of-way, it would be, um, the issues in the past was that the right-of-way has been uh covered or infringed upon uh with, you know, and visibility and whatnot. So if the right-of-way including the air could be kept clear, like to where people can't build things off the building and cover the sidewalk just because it's not on the ground. But to where uh the right-of-way in the air is also kept clear because that will block the businesses surrounding. Um, umbrellas, they, it seems like maybe industrial umbrellas, maybe they have them because I know most people have umbrellas like in France and stuff and everybody keeps saying probably have some professional ones, if that is what you decide upon that lasts longer, if that's a problem they're having. Um, and then if you are allowing them to have the kind of permanent roofing, if that roofing is not at the eye level that it blocks the surrounding businesses visibility, including their signs and, you know, at what you would normally see when you're driving down the street. Oh, and I think that uh a fee should be paid to use something monthly because you're there exponentially. Who knows the um profits these businesses will be able to increase their earnings. Um, it seems unfair to other businesses who don't have the same opportunities to uh expand their business onto the streets that they're not compensated to in some way. And if you do charge, then we could use that money hope towards bettering Lakeport, you know? That's what I think. Okay. Do we talk about things?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted you to
That's all.
Be able to finish. Okay. Um, Jenny, did you want to go through some of those?
Um, so the first question about the outdoor dining for uh those that have private space or a space that they could utilize the other way. So Park Place is an example. They had a private parking lot and that's what they're using under the temporary. Um, in the CB District, you are not required to provide parking. And so in their case, um the thought is they do have a space that they could utilize and so they wouldn't be allowed on-street dining. Three fifty North, we had the conversation and it was a council decision uh when we were working through the temporary and they were no longer temporary. I mean, we're going on almost three years. At some point, it's not really a temporary anymore. Um, so three fifty North, they had the backspace, but they still wanted to be able to have something on the sidewalk because it's really become synonymous for restaurants that in a Main Street kind of setting, that tables means restaurant here. I mean, it was never really a situation before, but since COVID, that really seems to signify that. So that was the thought process behind saying, if you didn't have that private space, because some Main Street, we don't have connecting alleys behind them. And it's, it's very interesting, um, even um back here, even right here, it's under private ownership. It's not a city right-of-way, alleys aren't a city right-of-way. And so not everyone has space that backs up. The two that come to mind, three fifty or Pogos and um Gaslight, they both, there's a parking area behind there, but it's owned by someone else and their building ends at their building. They didn't really have a private space that they could do both where they could have dining outdoor plus on the sidewalk. And so that's why the suggestion is for them to have on-street. Uh, Angelina's is the same situation. They don't have a space in the back that they could direct people to sit back there. And so the thought was for those type of businesses. Renee's is one that was also using the temporary and they already had a patio, but then they enclosed it in the temporary and we would require them to come into some kind of design standard instead of what they were assembling last winter and the winter before. So that's my response to uh when you would apply outdoor dining.
Well, and, and you've mentioned too before it even if you do have that private space, you don't have um you, you could still apply. It would just require an architectural design review, correct?
Yes.
It would, it wouldn't be a zoning permit at that case if you had private space as well. So there still is an opportunity, but it's just not um, the, the zoning permit aspect.
It would go to the Planning Commission for approval, yes.
Uh, Mike, but I'm just wondering like if the Clear Lake Club wanted to have on-street dining, being this is not COVID regulations, why would you not open it up to all businesses that want to have them?
They also have a patio.
Right, but that was for COVID. This is now community development, right? Like the reason you guys took that away was first, everybody had them because of COVID and then you took them away because some people had outdoor dining and some people didn't. But that was also just meaning COVID required like COVID safety, people feeling safe dining at restaurants. But now you're talking about enlivening the downtown area with outdoor dining. So why can't people who have backs, patios also have street side on the street?
That would be something that council could consider at this time.
And that's, they could request that from Planning Commission. They have that ability in the design guidelines to request that from the Planning Commission, not at a staff level approval. So we were looking for staff level approval versus um Planning Commission approval. So Clear Lake Club is a good example. They have the patio. They could, under the guidelines, do something along the sidewalk as long as they could keep five feet clear. If they wanted to take up a parking stall, they would take it to that next level.
And the next level is?
Planning Commission approval.
So they now have permission because prior they didn't have permission.
Correct. Under the temporary guidelines, if you had access to private space, you couldn't apply for the temporary. That was a change we made most recently, a, a few months back. Um, but now zoning permit for those that don't have access. Um, but there still is an opportunity for those that, that do have uh private space available to them. Uh, they can go through the architectural design review.
Seems fair. And so my next question was, um
The limit on the number per block?
You know what? I, I, I do need to ask council that. It wasn't included in the staff report. Council can make a decision as to number per block. Um, in the situation of your block, their Gaslight and Pogos do have one uh taking up two of the parking stalls, but there's other restaurants there. Um, Old World Tavern, they haven't been open for a while, nor has um Chopsticks. So there are two other restaurants. Marcel's is also located on there. Marcel's, uh, they've been having seating on the sidewalk area. And so that is a question for council. If you want to limit the number of parking spaces that could be utilized per block?
This, this kind of opens up into one of the conversations I wanted to have with council too is, um, the other option would potentially, you could have you could lift the um on-street dining up to a use permit or architectural design review level rather than a zoning permit. And then it becomes a discretionary review with a public hearing. Um, I think that would probably be a better option than um, you know, blanketly just limiting it per the number of blocks. Then you could actually have some discretion in whether or not it's appropriate rather than getting boxed into, oh, you've already got two here. You could at least examine whether or not um, that's appropriate way, you know, the, the current parking situations. Um, you know, the downtown blocks are relatively uniform, so it, the, you, the impacts are not going to be uh drastically different, but I would, I would suggest that if council wanted to uh take that rather than having a blanket provision of a, a limit per block uh frontage, that it maybe be something that was a discretionary review um by, by your planning commission uh for, not for the sidewalk dining or the private dining, just for uh the on-street dining applications. So something to consider.
Okay. Um, did we hit all of them?
Is it? No, I think the next one is it just for restaurants?
Oh.
I think was
So we have always had an outdoor retail process that you could go through. Um, Campos did receive a zoning permit to have outdoor retail. It's longstanding. This is only for outdoor dining. The section of code that we're proposing an amendment to is the outdoor um specific um outdoor dining as well. Other businesses still have a method that if they want to have outdoor retail, that they can accomplish that through the code. Okay, so we do have that. Um, as far as the monthly fees, that's a question that staff was asking of city council.
And then I think the next question was in regards to uh right-of-way clearance. I think not necessarily right-of-way for street right-of-way. I think what um, what Laurel was referring to is in regards to uh the designated path of travel. There was a discussion on whether that just was the width or if it includes the, the clear space above. And we, we had that conversation internally and in fact, we were suggesting that there might be some clarifying language that we could include, include to make sure that the um the active path of travel on the sidewalk remains not only width-wise, but remains clear um above as well.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And because the language right now is minimum width of sidewalk clearance and it, it doesn't clearly state. It was intended that there be separation. We didn't want an awning that went from a building to a curb and then have um them choose a pergola or something like that, which could have that. So many of the complaints that we did receive in the survey was that individuals felt like they were, when there was a tent and they were supposed to walk through them, that they weren't supposed to be there. And so we didn't want to have something that the awning could extend over that sidewalk clearance. There is language included in the zoning ordinance currently that they abide by the design standards of Main Street uh USA. And we've really just been diving into that. That I think was either two, two or three feet was allowed for an awning. We're up to five. I, I don't know. The language, we'll have to look back on that. But the intention was that we didn't have a situation where people who were walking the streets uh feel like they were intruding into a business. And so we were proposing that clearance.
I think the next question was in regards to professional uh graded uh umbrellas. Um, we don't have anything that specifically speaks to umbrellas, but we do have a, a general statement in here um on page six, uh regarding materials. Um, all furniture materials, which I would include an umbrella being a furniture material, be of durable quality and fire resistant. So I mean, we do have, and then I think the guidelines do have some other areas that talk about furniture and other amenities being maintained in, in good condition. So there are, there are aspects of this guideline that would, that would speak to that.
And we do have an amenities section on five, that umbrellas shall be fire retardant, pressure-treated or manufactured or fire-resistant material. No portion of an umbrella shall be less than eighty inches above the parklet platform. They must be free of advertisements. Um, we do know that sometimes Dr. Pepper or Pepsi or Coke, they'll give you free ones or not of the greatest quality. So that language was included, that they be free of advertisements. The umbrellas must be contained within the outdoor dining area, shall not encroach. Market-style umbrellas designed specifically for patio or outdoor restaurant use are preferred. So not required, but preferred.
Okay. I have one more thing I remembered, um, because it was stated that everybody needs to keep their area clean and uh without debris and food and whatnot, so that it doesn't lead to pest issues. I would like to request that when they clean that up, they remove it from their area and not expand it down the sidewalk. Like, don't blow the stuff down the sidewalk and leave it in front of other businesses. So that does need to be written because this is a real-life experience.
So we have language included that's failure to maintain. The outdoor dining areas shall be maintained free of litter, refuse and debris. The area shall remove any food or drink stains on a daily basis. Shall be in accordance with the city's stormwater management program. That's a reference to what you're referring to, that you can't just have, it becomes an illicit discharge if you're pouring your sodas and stuff like that down into the drain and then running a hose through there to wash that away. That is an illicit discharge. Uh, the city of Lakeport may revoke the permit due to failure to comply with the terms and conditions of the permit.
Okay, so yeah, the, the situation you outlined would, would certainly qualify as an illicit discharge. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Got it covered? Okay. Anyone else from the public? Anyone online?
Seen no hands raised.
Okay.
Bethany's hand's not even raised?
It's not.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council.
Well, the thing that occurs to me is um, when it comes to arbitrariness, which I can't stand, if you have a certain block and it has a number of bars and restaurants, and then you say, well, we can't have more than three and we decide that today. That may not fit the future. And um, um, I like the idea of once you get to the level where you're actually going to be encroaching on parking places and you're going to be putting dining out there and maybe you're going to put three, maybe you're going to put four because if the Old World Tavern opened up and they wanted to do it out there. And I agree with some of the people here today that there's nothing more engaging than having um beautiful walking areas and restaurants with people out there having a good time out on the sidewalk. And I, I do have a problem if somebody like three fifty North, which is closed, um, they have a back area where um nobody sees it unless you're over by, you know, on the waterfront. And so not having it in front, as you said, says restaurant here. And I think that they have an application that they can fill out and they could do that. And I think that's fair. And if they have the back and, and they do that too, that's great, but they could do that if they wanted to. But when it starts talking about taking parking places and being into the, you know, the, the right-of-way that's in the city of Lakeport, I, I do believe that that the idea of having, go through the Planning Commission and look at it is, is two too many on the street, is three too many. I think that they would be able to have a public hearing, get people in there, talk about it. So I, I think Kevin's idea is the best way to go rather than just ministerially saying, well, if you apply, you get a zoning permit, then boom, you can have three or four. What did the council say? Did they say you could have five or they said you can only have three? Um, I, I think going through that process, even though it's a little bit more laborious, I think we'd get a lot better. We got a couple of great former uh planning commissioners on there and they go through every detail. They get to have the public hearing and people can feed into that. And then it comes to us and so forth. So I, I think that is really at that level when you start encroaching and, and I'm not a big And and I'm not a big, I I find that a lot of business people, they complain about parking places and a lot of them use the parking places right in front of their place, which is insane to me. But yet they're the same ones that say, oh, they put that thing over that parklet and they're taking a parking place. Oh, you mean the one right next to your car in front of your business? It's pretty like hypocritical. So I I think that going to that level and having them do that is something that I really feel would be a good move because it gives everybody a chance to get input on each and every one of those rather than just rubber stamping it. Okay, we can put three there or four. Well, who got there first? And why did you give it to them? That kind of thing. So I like that idea.
I I second that. I I do believe the parking thing should go towards the planning commission and they can figure that out. Whether there's another one can be there, whether they're going to do it in the right way, all that. So I'm I agree with that.
And maybe they even see it as maybe, okay, this whole section would be great and we're going to lose three parking places. But it creates this, you know, this, what do they call it? Open space, you know, this thing. And it might be, I mean, some of the cities I've been in, it's just they take it off like one whole side and it's it's beautiful and it's fantastic. I mean, you go down to Cloverdale, Roseville, some of these places, and it's just fantastic. And the planning commission could look into that. It wouldn't just be arbitrary.
And what do you guys want to chime in about an annual fee?
The thing about the annual fee, having a very large area in front of my business. It seems to me that I spend way more time than Caltrans does cleaning up my area in front, cleaning up after the homeless and cleaning up after that. And if it's a good prudent business person and they want to have good curb appeal, I think they're earning the right to maybe have that right to do that if they do it in a in a prudent fashion. And it would be in their best interest, obviously, to do that. And it would almost substitute for the fact that they're using that. And it also helps the neighboring businesses. I can't help believe that in a case of like three fifty north, when they were open, that that had to help Campos. And that helps the city and the tax base and all that stuff. I just think it's a good thing overall. And like when people go to Angelina's and if it was in a nice, beautiful setup there instead of orange, you know, barriers that people walk there and they go by the place next door, just like someone said, I think that's really good. And it could help everybody if it's done in an aesthetically pleasing manner. So I I'm not really hard nose on on the money because I think they would be forced to take care of the area in spades and make sure that the curb and the gutter, I mean, I know cleaning the curb and gutter where the plants seem to grow when you don't want them to really well. That's a full time job over where I am and and we try and keep it that way. And I think most people would try and do that to keep it look aesthetically pleasing. So I I don't really have a problem with letting people do that. I think it would be a benefit to mostly all concerned. That's just my two cents.
A good point.
I feel the same way. I'm just curious to know how much Deanne was thinking that she'd like to give us. No, I I feel the same way looking at the survey and seeing that that the people that took the survey fifty six point one percent didn't think that we should collect a fee. I think I think that having the sidewalk restaurant sidewalk spaces enhances the city if it if it looks attractive. And like Kenny's already said, it's it's good for the next door businesses. In many cases, I know Laurel's not happy to hear that, but you know, I I believe that 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 bring that brings people walking into your your business. Okay, anyways, thank you.
Well, I did read too that cities that charge a fee usually it's because of a loss of revenue for parking meters. Councilmember Green?
I have many more questions than Laurel did. And unlike Laurel, I'm not gonna ask people to stay here and answer them all. My request to council is going to be, I think we've already raised enough issues and tweaking that we may have to come back and reintroduce this possibly at a later date. But let me get through my questions and my observations and we'll see where we're at. But let's start with the notion that whether, I don't care if six hundred people or six thousand people said it's a good idea. What we're really talking about here is converting public streets to private for-profit use. We're talking about turning parking spots into dining rooms. Okay, so where we were at before in the sidewalk dining ordinance and where we are now in Main Street, two very different ideas. And that single concept informs all these other questions. When did outdoor dining in a street way become a good idea? To the Sequa findings on the proposed thing, I just want to go off. I don't believe there is a secret exemption available here. We did not in the prior ordinance talk about dining in the streets. The actual title of the last quote thing is food service tables and seating placement on sidewalks. And all the conditions in the prior ordinance talked about sidewalk dining. We can't just fluff up our sidewalk dining into street dining and say, this isn't having any physical impact on environment. It's already having physical impact that we can observe. This is not some potential impact. So this can absolutely create, among other things, changes in traffic flow, changes in parking patterns, changes in how people are sitting in close proximity to traffic fumes while they're sucking on their burgers and and fries. This is a different animal than was previously regulated. The Sequa findings are not applicable, should not be adopted. The city has legal and possessory interest in the property that is being so willfully given away here. That's the public right away. That's Main Street, USA.
So Councilmember Green, did you talk to staff about the Sequa? Did you ask any of those questions before the meeting?
No.
No.
I'm going to do them now.
Okay.
Thank you. It's Main Street, USA. We've talked a lot about historic quality of downtown. The Main Street is part of that historic quality. I don't know where we can get in terms of what our surviving architecture is, but if there's if there's a historic downtown, this ordinance is going to change the quality of that historic downtown insofar as the use of its good old fashioned main. Get two carriages drawn by horses, Main Street, USA. This is going to change what our historic downtown looks like. That has not been considered. I didn't get to look at this when it was being approved, but in terms of possible precedent on the use of public property by private entities. There's a twenty-three page contract that the nonprofit Lakeport Yacht Club had to do and jump through, oh, any number of hoops as far as its use of public property in the park. Among the many things in that contract, and I'm not trying to relitigate that contract. I'm using it as precedent as an example for what's happening here. There's a maintenance clause in there. Tenant agrees to maintain this. City agrees to not maintain this. We spell that out in terms of a contract. The city shall continue to have responsibility to maintain the streets. I don't know if you noticed on Forbes and some of our side streets, there's a very nice micro surface project going on. What if I have five parklets out there and we want to pave Main Street? What's that going to do to that? Do we have the right to make them pick up those parklets when we pave our streets or repair our sewers or have to deal with the next flood? Will the tenant do as our good friends at the yacht club have to do and maintain a sign that not only do they get to use their outdoor dining areas, they have to make them available for use by the public? Do they get to give up their outdoor dining areas when we have a Memorial Day parade? Or do they get to lock it off so they can have parade front dining? Do we get do we get a contract so that we can enforce in some way that they have current ABC and city permits? If there's going to be any alcohol sales on the street? And last I heard, you couldn't traverse the sidewalk to get out to a street. That may have changed, but let's spell that out in a contract. You know, so if there is an issue with the ABC, we have a lockdown. Under this little example, this president precedent, the tenant agrees to notify the city of any hazmat conditions, but the tenant cleans it up. So are we going to impose the sidewalk dining people with the responsibility to clean up their own hazmats? We can even clean up mustard spills to everyone's satisfaction. Will these structures, whatever they may look like? So we require them to pay prevailing wages for the construction since the construction is taking place on public property. So we require them to keep workers' compensation, public liability insurance of one million dollar per incident, two million dollars in the aggregate. Shall we require not just the city pulling these permits to indemnify the city? But just as we do for the yacht club and their short term renters, shall we require the diners to sign agreements to indemnify the city? What is the risk to the city, notwithstanding these parking barricades? Somebody plows into one of those outdoor dining areas. Who do you think they're going to go after? And who's going to pay? This is not a rant against burgers or doing nice things for the city of Lakeport. I fully support the idea of increasing our businesses. But I do believe the precedent has been set starting in nineteen seventy-two with the yacht club and whatever this little gift was bestowed upon them has certainly reinforced the idea that when private uses occur on public lands, different rules apply. And the best thing you can do with those rules is put them in the form of an enforceable contract. And then ask the people coming to us if they want to chew on that contract or come up with a better idea. Absolutely, we should pay. We require them to pay a fee. We have an interest in it. It's a leasehold interest if they want to go out on public property and make money doing that. Our failure to enforce a contract or even talk about it at this stage would not be anywhere close to due diligence. I don't think the risk factors have been studied to any real extent. Pergola, great, until you're trying to cost Main Street at first and dodging cars. Her question was about signage. Mine mine is more about visibility. Is there a maximum height to these structures? The view shed of what our historical buildings do have. You know, can we see them when we have a bunch of pergolas or planner boxes or what have you? I I just think there's any number of issues, but but risk primarily among them and also precedent among them. When we want to convert Main Street, USA into some different vision of that, we need more than just, we want to do it. We we need to have a clear vision. We had talked in the very early phases of this. Let's shut down the whole street. Let's build it up like Ukaydas. Let's get them out of the street and up to an expanded sidewalk situation. And then guess what? You're back in the sidewalk dining. That's a good place to be. But this draft ordinance doesn't get us there. This draft ordinance hasn't studied all the implications that need to be studied if we're doing our due diligence. And I would strongly recommend that we postpone consideration of this so that they can bring back some answers to those questions. Come up with some ideas of how to address them. And try to continue moving forward. Certainly don't want to block this, but I I am. Yeah, to to see what just happened over there without relitigating it again. But but definitely there's an apples and oranges thing going on here. And I think the for-profit industries are getting more than a nonprofit has so far. Thank you.
When you say apples to apples or oranges, are you talking about the yacht club? What are you talking about? What is the apples to oranges comparison?
They're all apples. If you're using public lands for private.
Oh. And.
Right now, they're trying to say they're apples and oranges. I'm saying they're all apples.
Okay.
They are non-public organizations attempting to conduct commercial activities on public lands.
It's really not similar to the the building that it's more similar to maybe a little lake bed lease fees that everyone with a dock is paying a lake bed lease fee to use that the li- the lake water for their dock.
And we still maintain two million dollars of insurance for that with no boats on the buoys. And the biggest thing that's going to happen if a boat comes off is it may hit the dock. They're on there.
Well, the question was a contract. You're saying that it's set precedent for a contract. I'm not sure that it does. So then then paragraph six has the notice for removal. You had talked about if there needs to be work done, there is a paragraph for that. And paragraph eight, of course, is the indemnification paragraph. But Jenny, did you want to talk about the Sequa?
Even if the entire council felt that they didn't like the argument that was made. There's other exemptions, class four, section one, five, three, zero, four for minor alterations to land. We look at the totality currently, there's three parking stalls that are utilizing it. If you look at Sequa as a whole, would you consider that to be a minor modification? And so I'd probably start there, but I think there's other Sequa exemptions that could be used besides a minor alteration to land. I I personally would consider three parking stalls minor to the entirety of the city.
If you are talking just in terms of losing three parking spaces, but you're talking about creating a new type of land use for the previous parking spaces.
That currently is currently a use. It's an alteration of a use. And I would consider it a minor alteration of a land use. But I'm also not prepared completely to have the conversation. That's just off the top of my head what Sequa exemption I would propose. But could evaluate further and see what other exemptions there are. It's currently a land use. You're shifting it to a different type of land use. Could we consider that minor?
Yeah, I I don't think we're going to be able to get to a an answer on on that one specifically. I mean, there's there's a lot here that if council wants us to you know, chew on and and bring responses back, we certainly can. But I don't think we're going to be able to answer all of these specifically this evening. With that said, I I I think it was some of the things that we were bringing up already. I think we were planning on bringing it it back. This was kind of a a first reading of sorts. But you know, if if council wants to give direction that we make amendments and and change the on-street dining to something that does need to be reviewed by the planning commission rather than a zoning permit. We haven't touched on one of the other things that that came up. As as Jenny mentioned, this was kind of in the process being reviewed by planning commission when some of us attended the Cal Cities and bring up. But I think there are some simple language changes that we can add in to you to, you know, kind of have certified traffic barriers that that meet the 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 requirements of of traffic that are speeding through here at thirty miles.
Crash rating.
The crash rating.
A variety of miles per hour.
So I I guess what I'm saying is we we are planning on, if if that's the direction council wants to go, it will have to come back for first reading. We can take a shot at at some of these, these areas that Councilmember Green brought up and 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 bring them back. We'd certainly have to to dig more on the Sequa stuff. The, there is a demnification requirements. There are insurance requirements. There will be a requirement for the issuance of an encroachment permit. I mean, a lot of these things are, they're more standardized because these are uses that are already anticipated. Where I would argue that the yacht club is is a standalone. We don't have, you know, ten of those going around, whereas here there's an envision that there there could be. So I don't, I don't personally think that the development of large scale contract like we did with the yacht club would be necessary. However, there are, there are some items in there. I think the ABC provisions are covered. They're going to, you know, folks are going to have to meet those ABC standards, whatever those are today. They're going to have to meet them. If they change, they're going to have to meet them. I mean, that's that that is anticipated within within these design guidelines.
Well, and Governor Newsom did pass three specifically for alcohol and beverage control to go on in perpetuity. I don't have those. I took it in a previous planning commission. It used to be that you had to have an approved barricade. You're right, you couldn't have alcohol. They are the three that I can think of that they're putting forward in perpetuity are to go, alcohol to go. But also the ability to cross into an area that's no longer necessary to have a barricade around it. It it was very specific in there and Newsom passed, I think, last September or October. Three, I did include it in a planning commission staff report. And so it would be very simple to get that information to city council to know the laws of alcohol and beverage control. But they, he changed them.
We we've heard a couple of times this evening that the idea of view shed protection, we did build that into, that was an item that came up in some of our temporary. If council thinks that that needs to be strengthened a little bit, we could, we could come back with with some suggestions there. Or alternatively, you know, if this is a, I don't imagine that the view shed issue to both the history, I like that brought up the historical character of downtown. That that's a, that's a legitimate point. We don't want these to take away from from that historical character. I think we've done a good job in coming up with. I think we've done a good job in coming up with, um, with design aspects that complement the downtown area, but we certainly wouldn't want to inadvertently do that. But I think that's another argument for why, uh, the on-street dining one should be reviewed at the planning commission level. Cause those are, those are things that could certainly, and we could put language in there talking about the need to, to protect uh, the view shed to other businesses and protect the historical, um, integrity of the area. Uh, the one that, um, I do not believe, the one, uh, item that Council of Green brought up that I don't think can be resolved um, through, uh, adoption of zoning warrants is the, the first idea that you brought up is it's more of a fundamental question of whether this is the right thing to do. Converting, this is absolutely, you would be converting public space into a for-profit space. Um, and then the, the question is dining in the street, a good idea? Those are more, um, philosophical items that have to be worked out on whether or not this could or, or could not be. And I would argue that, um, you know, one of our key components of our economic development strategy is getting feet on the street and keeping them there. I've always felt that when you're driving through downtown, you're not doing that. You know, I mean, that, I think that, uh, it's been proven time and time again on different studies that if you're out of your car, you're walking through downtown, you're spending time in downtown. Our retail coach items have shown that people that spend, uh, 20 minutes downtown don't spend as much money as those that spend one or two hours downtown. And, uh, outdoor dining, I think, is a huge component to getting people to spend more time downtown. Uh, so I would argue that, that it would be an appropriate use, uh, complimentary to our economic strategic plan. It has to be done correctly, um, but, uh, that is ultimately the council's decision as to whether or not this is an appropriate use of, uh, the public area, because it is, it is a public area right now.
And, and where I'll frame it and leave it to everyone's great gratitude, I'm sure. It was what's, it's standard, the way you have it in there as if it was just a, a permit or an ADU, uh, ADR between the applicant and the city, and you have language in there identifying that. Those third-party lawsuits, how, how do we protect diners from suing the city? And, um, it's not in there. And I think, doesn't have to be 23 pages, but I don't think a permit is the way to enforce that type of thing. I think you do have to reach contracts, uh, spelling out, uh, the required levels of insurance and also requiring out who needs to be, uh, indemnified. And, and I think it is totally applicable, the example of the yacht club and that thing. If a short-term renter there has to, and reach a separate, bring an insurance rider to us and show us that we've, and they've identified the city. Uh, can we do no less for the diners? Or can we put up signage advising them that if you get run over, you do it, it's at your own risk, but something. Because, because didn't we just have a fatal on Armstrong a couple of months ago?
It was on Main Street.
It was on Main Street at Armstrong, right? A fatal pedestrian accident. That's a busy street. I've seen too many near misses in the crosswalks. I've seen too many people crossing in the middle of the street. We don't have a bike lane yet, so we can't really say these will impede our bike lanes. But if we ever want bike lanes down Main Street, I want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot for any potential future bike lanes. Uh, and I've seen bike lanes swerving around those barriers and cars swerving around the bikes swerving around the barriers. So traffic safety is huge, pedestrian safety is huge. Indemnifying the city against very predictable adverse risk is huge. And I'll leave it at that.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
I find a, do we need a vote for changing what council would like?
We can make a motion to bring it back with, um, some of the changes that we discussed.
Yeah, I've, I've got a, a pretty good list if you want me to take a, a shot at it real quick before. So I mean, we'd be looking at, um, uh, some amendment language to make the on-street dining, um, a, um, whether it be architectural design review or use permit, some sort of aspect that would be, have a public hearing and review just by, by the planning commission. We'll look at in strengthening the language about, um, crash barriers. If I'm hearing correctly, we not looking, uh, to, uh, study the need for an annual fee. I get that correct?
There might be consensus, uh, we didn't.
We were requiring an annual permit though, and so when I look at that, I'm thinking basically in line with the zoning permit annual fee.
But you meant for like a rental lease fee.
Right, okay.
We can certainly, um, uh, run this through, uh, David and, and the rest of our, our legal team and see if there are some strengthening, strengthening language that can be provided, um, on the indemnification front and, uh, the insurance front. And we can make some recommendations there. We can, I, I think the, the idea of the view shed protection and maintaining the historical character is certainly something we can look at a little bit more. And maybe you add that as a, an item that's something that needs to be taken under consideration while the planning commission's reviewing, um, these on-street ones. I don't think that that would become an issue for sidewalk dining or the, the private entity ones. I don't see a reason why that couldn't still stay at a zoning permit base.
Prevailing, prevailing wage?
I will, we'll ask the question in regards to prevailing wage, um, see if we can get some answers there. Will, um, we can, we'll, um, look at the SEQA exemption, uh, piece and go through all these notes here, stronger indemnification, view shed. I think that's covering all the areas. Did we have any other small pieces that we were proposing, Jenny? She made me a nice cheat sheet earlier.
It did. No.
I think we covered them all.
So we could make a motion to bring back more information and the amendments, Kevin?
Yeah, as long as.
If you want it to be to a date specific, then we wouldn't have to re-notice it and that type of thing. And so if you wanted to make a motion for a date specific.
I think we can, you, you think.
Relatively quick, yeah, I think we could bring it back at the November 1st.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Because we had already drafted some of this language prior to this meeting.
Yeah, I think we, if you, if you want to, um, provide direction to staff to bring it back to date time certain for November 1st, that would still be the first reading, it wouldn't be our second reading, so we'd, we'd be kind of.
Would you like a motion or just?
If I might make a recommendation, um, the existing motion is to introduce the draft ordinance. You could make a mission, uh, motion to reintroduce the draft ordinance at November 1st. And then I assume we would not be adopting the resolution.
No.
So.
Yeah, it'd be perfect.
Perfect. Thank you, Kelly.
You don't have to notice the reintroduction.
Um, no. We do have to, uh, re-notice it.
Oh, we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, since it's past five days out.
So then it wouldn't be November 1st.
No, it would still be November 1st. We just have to, we'll have to do it.
We wouldn't be able to get it to the newspaper, but it's questionable.
Yeah.
Because of, it would need 10 days, it would need another 10 days.
Yes.
It's Tuesday, we would have to have it to the newspaper.
Okay, then it'll have to be November.
Or tomorrow to be on the first. We, we struggle with this frequently. We've been having conversations with David to ensure that we have the day before and the day of not included in the counts.
Well, just on the safe side, then we better, let's, let's kick it to the November 15th one then.
Okay. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Is it going to be continue to a date and time certain on the 15th?
Yeah.
To reintroduce the draft ordinance on November 15th.
What'd you say, 16? All right, uh, move, we continue the public hearing on this item to a date and time certain, that date being November.
15.
15th at 6:00 PM.
Is that, is that okay if we say continue the public hearing? Is that the same as reintroduced?
Um, we could say it would probably be better for reintroduce.
Oh, you want to reintroduce? Well, because there's going to be substantial changes.
Yeah.
Okay, I see. So the motion will be to reintroduce. Uh, bring this back November 15th, uh, to reintroduce the ordinance and hold a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we've been going a couple of hours. You guys want to take a short break? Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back just after eight. We'll come back just after eight.
Question for you.
We're unmuted. We are live.
New Tesla.
New Tesla out there.
Madam Mayor, you're back on.
All right, we're back. Thank you for the break. Uh, we're going to council business, uh, community development director contract award.
Thank you, Mayor Matina and council members. City council is being asked to execute a professional services agreement with WMH Corporation for the Lakeport Boulevard at Bevan Street intersection project study report. An RFQ was issued June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it really was to, uh, it was called the Lakeport Boulevard and State Route intersections. We wanted to identify some designs at State Route twenty-nine as well as at Bevins. We have quite a few projects that are going on between the courthouse, between some of the apartments at Bevins. We have an active uh code enforcement that we're working with the commercial development there at the corner of Bevins and Lakeport Boulevard. And if all of these things were to come to fruition at one time, we may have some issues. And so the city requested an RFQ uh for that intersection. We received two proposals. However, the scope and timelines exceeded staff's anticipation. A request was made to both firms to revise their scopes to only provide design concepts for the Lakeport Boulevard and Bevan Street intersection. After careful review, staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the professional service agreement with WMH. Uh, the budget amount was a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars uh or a hundred and forty-two thousand fourteen dollars. Uh, we are requesting a two hundred thousand budget adjustment that should be covered by contributions from future developments, including the courthouse project and the Lakeport. Um, part of that budget adjustment would also cover this funding on, I know I'm going to get myself in over my head. But in general, that's what we're requesting is that uh city council authorized city manager to sign the professional service agreement unless Nick wants to elaborate for me.
I mean, if you guys have questions, I can answer the budget questions.
Okay. Thanks Jenny.
I started to get in there and I thought I need out.
We updated the comment of the staff report and I think Jenny didn't read it verbatim, but if you read the co- the fiscal section of the staff report, I think that explains it.
Yes.
In the fiscal impact area, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
It's really, this is, you know, this is trying to do some advanced planning work. Um, as Jenny noted, we are seeing a uh, large number of projects that would have impacts to this area. Um, and as we do these studies, um, one of the things we need to identify is what their contribution to future intersections should be, and this study would help us do that. Um, that's number of housing projects, Long Martin. We know that tribal health um is potentially looking at some uh, you know, larger expansion of their site. That would certainly have an impact on this intersection. Um, everything uh to the west side of town coming into town would have an impact on this uh intersection. Uh, so this is just a kind of a good, a good planning practice. Um, we do have, uh, as, as Nick noted in there, some money set aside, but it's not one hundred percent, but that really will be reimbursed by these, these future projects. Um, but we need to have answers to provide those future projects of what their impacts are, and that's what this study is really designed to do.
Right. Any questions? We lost the public in the room. Do we have anyone online?
Um, no hands is online.
Okay, we'll bring it back for a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing else, I move to approve and authorize city manager to execute a professional service agreement with uh WMH for the Lakeport Boulevard at Bevan Street project study report equivalent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is our city manager with a mutual aid agreement.
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. Uh, the city managers of uh both um Lake County and Mendocino County, uh, we meet every other month to a kind of uh, it's an opportunity to kind of discuss opportunities and challenges that face our region. Um, all the cities in this two county area um have been affected um at various times by a, a number of different uh, both natural and made uh man-made disasters. Um, these, these disasters have often necessitated uh the need for mutual aid assistance. I mean, I think most specifically for us during the Mendocino complex fire, uh, we were grateful to uh get um mutually assistance from a number of different law enforcement agencies who assisted in uh patrolling uh town uh during the evacuation period. Uh, during the twenty seventeen flood event when we um had to put the bypass in and evacuate the Willow Point area. Uh, there we, we had um a, a sewer bypass area there where the city of Ukiah uh lent us staff to help us uh, you know, fund uh to, to kind of shift those, those twenty-four hour shifts. Uh, so these, you know, these disasters um can quickly overwhelm the, the capabilities of, of the small cities that um, that are in our region. And we have to oftentimes uh come together and, and provide support. Um, so we, we already help each other out. Uh, what this agreement is really uh aimed to do is to kind of solidify agreement and kind of um make sure that all of our, our paperwork and stuff is compliant with FEMA and CAL OES standards. Um, and, and streamline um both the, the systems approach to doing that and also to assist in streamlining the reimbursement process um at the end of this. Um, Mendocino County uh embarked on this and they were already a, a little bit um into the process. And we're grateful that uh they reached out to both um us and Clear Lake to include us in this provision. And um, I think this is a, this is a, a great um, one of those things that uh we hope not to use. Um, but we know the answer that that's not always the case. Um, and we certainly um want to make sure that we're ready to uh lend our support to our, our sister cities when they're in need as well. So certainly able to uh entertain or any questions regarding the actual substance of the agreement.
Thanks, Kevin. This is awesome proactive that we're doing this. Um, any questions?
Our coastal sisters are quite a bit waves. Um, it just seems kind of far flung, our little mutual aid family.
I, I think the, the kind of provision there is that a, a lot of the water and wastewater systems that we um, that we utilize are, are very similar. Um, so it's, it's not just the um, you, you, they may face some different natural disaster type challenges, but um, a lot of our systems um are the same. A lot of our certifications back and forth are, are the same and um, we're, we're all very short-staffed, um, even on good days and, and these disasters can quickly overwhelm us. And so I think that, that's kind of the, the item is that we can, where we can, we can lend that assistance.
We have sent help a long way in the past, haven't we?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, we, uh, most recently um in the county, um, we have a water tender um that we've uh have folks that are certified to utilize and we've um, we, we've utilized that mutual aid agreement that we have with our um, with our fire agencies. I know that uh chief sends uh staff uh quite frequently um during uh disasters when we have them available to um, to support uh cities that are in need, just like we received a tremendous amount of support during the Mendocino complex fire.
And these are all cities that are usually involved in our regular sports programs. We go regularly all the time, whether it's Point Rag, Willets, Point Arena or any of those places. And those are, I mean, when I first came up here from the Bay Area, I was like, wow. You guys go like two hours to a game when we used to go like six minutes away, you know, so. Yeah, it's, it's not a big deal to go to Point Arena or any of those places when you're on a bus with, you know, eighteen baseball players or whatever. It's common.
The other, the other advantage we have now is too, is these are all Sierra cities as well. I know with, with REMF, there were a couple of them that weren't physically part of REMF, but these are all uh Sierra cities as well. So from our insurance pool, they're all, they're all in the same as.
So we want to keep the rates down.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there's incentive to keep the rates down.
Any other questions? There's no public. Anyone online?
Uh, no hands online.
Okay, we'll bring it back for a motion.
Further, Madam Mayor, I move we approve the mutual aid agreement for emergency assistance among the city of Lakeport, city of Clear Lake, city of Ukiah, city of Fort Bragg, Two Gs, city of Willets and city of Point Arena and authorize the city manager to sign and make any minor modifications that do not alter the intent of the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Assistant city manager financial report amendments to the city budget. Nick?
Yeah, good evening again, Madam Mayor and uh city council members. Uh, with this item, uh, your council is being asked to receive a presentation on the fiscal year end uh June thirty twenty-two. An audit financial statement to provide staff direction on the treatment of any surplus revenues. Um, we call it unaudited uh financial statements at this time, but the reality is auditors have been here. These are the same balances that they'd, they've audited. Um, you know, sometimes a men adjustments do arise, um, but we're ninety percent down the road on the audit and there have been no adjustments to have arise. So I expect these to be pretty, pretty close to audited. Um, the attachments in the back of the staff report uh should be in a similar format. We've been, been presenting them like that for some time now. Um. The second section of the staff report includes an update on the investments. Um, you may notice uh market values of the CDs have declined slightly. Um, that, that doesn't change uh the, the interest payments that we receive. We're still going to receive uh the, you know, three and a half with uh three percent interest on all of those. It's just that if we were to go to market some today, we would lose a little bit of money, which we're not going to do. Uh, the next section goes right into um some general fund highlights. Uh. For the year ended June thirty twenty-two, uh, the general fund has a significant uh surplus. Um. We, the, the adjusted budget deficit was about one point one million. Um, the unadded actual surplus came in at almost six hundred thousand. Um, which is one point seven. When I backed out the projects that we've already carried over in the budget, it brings it down to about uh one point two eight five. Um, some of that is overperforming revenues, about two hundred fifty thousand uh primarily sales tax. Um, that came in a little bit better than we anticipated. Um, but the majority of that surplus is coming from salary and benefits savings across multiple departments, uh PD most notably, but we also um had some vacancies in community development and public works and parks. Um, and they, those accumulated um into this one point two uh million dollars. Uh, the next. The next section, um, the next chart, I should say, is staff uh rec- the staff recommended uses of this surplus. Um, there is a list of six items there. The first three are um reserve requirements uh that are calculated out of the pension and reserve policy. Um, the twenty-six thousand dollars to the road improvement maintenance fund was for some uh road improvement money that, that wasn't spent. So we will put that in the, the road improvement maintenance fund uh bucket for future road improvement costs. Um, the vehicle and equipment replacement reserve um was calculated, I think it's ten percent of the surplus uh plus uh the annual uh depreciation. Uh, so that's an eighty-seven thousand dollar contribution. Uh, the pension other employment benefit contribution. The policy requires uh ten percent of surplus contribution annually. Plus it, it had um a, a calculation of the savings that were generated from issuing the pension obligation bonds. Um, and because the surplus is so high, what I'm recommending is I've this three hundred and almost three hundred fifty thousand dollars includes the entire ten-year requirement of, of savings from uh those, that, those, that bond issuance. Um, and I'm recommending we just front load that contribution to the fund and we don't have to deal with it on an annual basis. We'll still have to contribute ten percent of any surplus, um, but we, we won't have to make that um savings uh contribution every year. I could calculate, uh, we, I know what the savings are going to be and we can calculate that and just, and just uh make that deposit. Um, if you flip over to the attachments uh of the general fund, um, you'll notice in the reserve section, you'll see um you'll see kind of the beginning, reserve balance and the ending reserve balance with these adjustments made just so for a visual um of kind of where, where those uh reserves uh sit with the adjustments. Uh, the next three are, are, the two of them are, are specific budget adjustment items that staff is recommending. Uh, one being an additional um hundred thousand dollars towards uh Carnegie improvements um to the, to the upstairs section, lighting, uh ceiling and flooring. Is that? Is that where we're at with that? A hundred, I think it totals a hundred and sixty thousand with the.
Remember flooring was included and they're not. I think it is. It definitely ceiling and lighting. And I think there were some issues on the flooring. Yeah.
So the, the existing budget, as you, you see in the chart above, uh, we carried over sixty thousand dollars for Carnegie. Uh, that we would be putting another hundred. That would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for some uh Carnegie library improvements. Um, the item above that uh is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh requested budget amendment uh to demo the natural, the old natural high building. Um, and the, the last one there is, is, is a request from staff to um direct us to assign uh which is the technical term for a staff level assignment of fund balance um for some s- specific things. Uh, one being the lakefront park. Um, uh, you may recall, uh, we asked for a, an eight hundred thousand dollar general fund contribution to that project to fully fund it. Um, that did leave a very small contingency of about five percent. And so um while uh the contract we just executed is within budget, um, we felt it would be prudent to kind of set aside a few, a few bucks, um, a few bucks, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, that's five percent of the, ten percent of the project. We don't expect to see change orders in that, in that amount, but it would be nice to have access to um to a bucket of money in case there are issues with uh the construction of the park. Um, second, second item in that four hundred fifty would be uh participation in rec um upcoming rec center um items that, that may be coming. And then third would be uh the remainder just going towards roads in general. Um, and I would just add that any items that we spent out of that bucket would obviously come back uh before this council in the form of a contract amendment or a new contract, and you would then have the option to approve the actual spending of the money. But at this time, it's set aside for those specific things. Um, I think lastly, uh, there are uh some highlights of the water and sewer um operating funds. Um, they both ended up with some surpluses, sewer being greater than water. Um, but it is staff's recommendation to uh for water to um let that bolster the reserve a little bit and for sewer. Um, if you recall from the CIP adopted with the rate study, um, there will be lots of cash funded projects coming out of sewer. And so that, that surplus would just go into that bucket and help fund cash funded um capital improvement projects. And again, uh, just to highlight the, the budget adjustments that we, we'd be requesting tonight are in total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars um for uh Carnegie Library and the demolition of uh the old natural high building.
All right. Is that it, Nick?
Yes.
Thank you for making that so easy to understand. It's very clear. And um quite the surplus. I feel bad. That means um if we're short, some of those employees that the ones we do have are doing a lot of extra work. Maybe we should take some of the surplus and throw them a party and thank them for covering for all the people that we didn't have.
I think the good news is we have filled some of those positions, but they just came in later in the budget year in the process. So we are making progress in that fashion. But yeah, it, it, um, I think that trend is being seen on a nationwide wide scale. I mean, um, it doesn't seem to matter what industry you're in.
It's true.
Hiring employees of, and uh all the way up. I mean, we used to get applications thirty, forty plus for entry level positions, and now we're lucky to get a handful. Um, so it's really a, a changing dynamic there. We're, we're certainly um looking into, to different strategies to amend that. But um, yeah, when you see it in black and white, uh, what effect it has in the budget, it, it's, it's rather dramatic.
Well, and the effect on the people that are working, they're exhausted.
And, and I, I would, I would add, most of it was salary and benefits, but, but also if, if you don't have the people you And, and I, I would, I would add, most of it was salary and benefits, but, but also if, if you don't have the people, you can't spend the operation lines either, right? So it's, it's some of both.
Yeah. Any questions?
Is the teardown and asbestos project, or is that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a costly, a costly project.
Yeah.
Asbestos, it's, yeah.
So we can't just burn it. Okay.
Are we looking at, uh, doing that this year instead of next year?
Yes, that, I mean, if, if your council moves forward with this recommended staff plan, we would, we would put that on the, the project list and, and start along the process of getting that under contract. It's not part of the park project, uh, so it's not covered under that contract. So it would be a, it would be a separate, um, endeavor. It's not currently budgeted, so.
Does anybody have any problems with the significance of historically of that building?
Of natural high? They will.
They will.
I went to school there.
We would rather not look at it from the park.
If the trees were any indication, well, I don't know what's gonna happen when the building comes.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
Seeing no hands raised.
And no public in the room. Okay, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, move to approve the amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty two, thirty, twenty two, twenty three city budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public Works Superintendent, we're gonna look at a new contract. Paul?
No, actually, I'm gonna take a shot at this and, uh.
Scare him like that.
You woke me up. What did you say?
I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a shot at this one and, and certainly, uh, Ron and, and Paul and, and Nick. And, and everybody else can, can help rescue me if I get down, uh, too strange. Um, uh, one of the greatest challenges that, uh, that we have certainly experienced, uh, I think, and this is a, a challenge. It's not just unique to Lakeport. Um, I think rural cities in general, small cities, um, are, are being challenged by this. Is, um, we're kind of living in a world that is becoming more and more specialized, uh, more and more specialized, uh, services. More and more specialized requirements, um, end up on, on, uh, our projects. And, um, one of the difficulties that we have is getting access to those, uh, specialized services. Whether it be, uh, a geotechnical engineer for a project, we ran into it in regards to the Forbes Creek neighborhood. You know, we had that grant for quite some time, but it took us a while to get a contractor on board with the specialized, uh, expertise to conduct that, um, that large drainage study appropriately. Uh, so this, this, um, sort of approach is trying to attack, uh, that a little head on. Uh, projects, our projects are often delayed, uh, several months as staff has to prepare, uh, individual, uh, requests for proposals. Uh, solicit bids and put together contracts, uh, to, to meet these, um, these special services. Um, and the time, uh, necessary to procure those specialized services off. Um, another downside to that is, um, a lot of times it, the, the time necessary to procure these specialized services has prevented us from, um, being able to apply for certain grant applications that maybe require a specialized study in order to qualify. Uh, so what we're trying to do is, um, develop a, um, a, a, a larger sort of on-call suite of, um, folks that are already sort of pre, pre-vested, pre-qualified, already under contract, uh, to provide uh, these various services. Uh, we, we went and solicited an RFP, uh, kind of outlining a whole plethora of, um, items. We kind of reviewed all the projects that we've had over the past ten, fifteen years and said, okay, what, what was needed? What didn't we have? What delayed a project and tried to capture all those and solicit that out? And then aggressively went after, uh, firms all around, uh, the, the region, um, that provide those services and, and requesting them to provide their, uh, qualifications. Uh, we were successful in getting fifteen, uh, folks to bring those back, uh, a lot of them. I think, I forget what the number is here, is in the staff report. Eleven of those firms are full service, meaning that they provide a, a whole suite of, uh, different specialized services. And then some of the other ones, um, provide very unique and specialized pieces, you know, like, um, uh, trees, um, uh, environmental or, or do certain, do certain, one thing only. So what we've done is, um, put these all together and we're looking at vesting them to try and help us streamline that aspect. And also have, um, a litany of, of different folks that can provide the specialized work, um, when, when it comes available. Uh, we have a large number of projects on our plate coming up. We have over five million dollars in, uh, water bond, uh, projects. Uh, we have over two million dollars in sewer infrastructure improvements on the book. We have another probably couple million in, uh, roads and other capital improvement projects coming up over the next couple of years. And as mentioned as well, uh, this will also provide us some, uh, greater flexibility in, in going after some grants that we haven't been able to, um, if we can get some of these project, uh, reports in place. A lot of times prior to, um, uh, you, I think the term that most people get, uh, kind of familiar with it, I hate is shovel-ready projects. Um, but, you know, a lot of times that means having thirty percent engineering in place for a project to have something that's on the shelf, ready to go and insert into a, a grant application. This will help us along that way as well. Um, I know the numbers seem really high because they are, uh, we have, but that, this by no means, you know, we're approving eleven of these. You know, we're, we're seeking council's approval on eleven of these, uh, for, um, up to one million dollars. Uh, this by no means guarantees that each of these firms are gonna get one million dollars worth of work. What it kind of is putting in place is, um, when a project comes available, say, say, uh, if you guys approve this in a week's time or so. Paul wants to move forward with one of those water bond projects, putting, putting some pipe in the ground. We would look through this list, figure out which of these firms, uh, provide that service. We would pu- put together sort of a one or two page work order request, uh, of these firms to provide us, um, how much it's gonna cost them. And then their timeline as well, which is very important to us. And then we would review and look at those pieces as well. This is not giving the city a blank check to, you know, city staff to have a blank check to go out and just pursue projects willy-nilly. These are gonna be, these are things that are already on the books, they're already budgeted for. This is just a, a, uh, means of trying to, uh, streamline it. Uh, I came across this proposal, um, at a city manager's, uh, conference in meeting, um, with, um, a couple of our, our fellow regional cities, the, the city of Fortuna, um, the city manager there, uh, strong background in public works. Um, adopted this program, um, and, um, Alan over there in the city of Clearlake has also requested this as well. And I think this is a, a good trend for rural cities. But I, I want to make sure that council understands that this is not by any means bypassing, uh, the, the fair bidding process. Construction, this is really for design and professional services, getting, getting a project that's ready to bid for construction. We still absolutely would go out, uh, the park project, this would not supersede the construction bid for that. This does not supersede the construction bid process that we're doing right now for the micro-surfacing or, or for the main street construction projects and such. But really is, um, getting us, um, in place to be able to, uh, provide, um, and streamline getting these projects moving forward in a timely fashion. So certainly I, I understand there, there'll probably be some questions on this, uh, Ron and Paul, and hopefully can help bail me out on anything, uh, specific. But, um, I think this is a, this is a really good approach, um, for the city. Um, in kind of balancing and making sure that we are, um, being a fair to the, um, the bid process. While at the same time, making sure that our projects move forward in a timely manner.
Right. Any questions?
Just one quick question. So you're saying that because we were unable to procure the right type of engineering firm in a, in a right amount of time, that we actually lost the opportunity to get free grant money?
Uh, well, it's, there's.
In few cases.
Never, never really free grant money. I mean, it always comes at, at some sort of cost to us. But yes, there's been times where we, we start, uh, down the path of a, um, of a project. I think a most recent one was the, uh, ATP, the Active Transportation, uh, Plan Cycle, which is what's funding the Hartley Improvement Project right now. The next cycle of that, we were looking at putting a project together, but we didn't have, uh, the thirty percent engineering pieces. We didn't have a lot of the specifics that they were calling for, um, in being able to determine what the greenhouse gas level reduction was or, or some of those pieces. And so we weren't able to apply for this cycle. We're making, uh, uh, we've, we've already reached out. We brought that problem to the attention of Lake APC. They're assisting us in getting, you know, that, that underway so that we're ready to go for the next cycle, regardless of this. Um, so we're trying not to do, but it seems more and more that a lot of these, uh, grant applications, they're usually connected to some specialized, uh, feature like a, you know, a, a greenhouse reduction, um, element or some sort of specialized thing that we just don't have in-house and are ready, ready to do. So this would afford us that ability, uh, to go after that. A little bit more aggressively.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So this covers the RF, the RFQ part of it, you're requalifying these guys basically. But then some of these studies like Forbes Creek, for example, don't we put those out to bid to sometimes?
Well, the, the idea would be, yeah, so I mean, some of those, I mean, like the Forbes Creek one probably would, is probably not a good example of this because that was a grant funded. It, it would be for projects that are currently budgeted. Um, I mean, if there was another, if there was a project that wasn't budgeted that we want to go after, we would certainly have to come back to council to seek approval. But these, all the, um, all the design and engineering, uh, for these projects, for say, for, uh, Paul's five million in water bond, we have that budget, we have that money side. We know that there's a certain percentage of that that's gonna be for design and engineering, so that's already.
You don't have to put the design portion of that out to bid itself?
This would be taking that place.
Okay, so there's something in the public resources code that says if you prequal these guys, you can go up to X amount without.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Uh, and my suggestion for the replacement for shovel-ready project will be pre-roll.
Say it again?
Pre-roll.
Pre-roll?
There'll be pre-rolls. Okay.
Kind of like a prequel, but it's a pre-roll.
No, pre-rolls from our friends in the cannabis industry. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, yes.
I had to spell it out apparently. Okay.
That's a little late.
Ron, did you have anything you wanted to add since you're actually our public works superintendent?
Sure. I, I, I mean, I think Kevin covered it very well. The example I was gonna give was, was the ATP project that wanted to close some of the gaps in the sidewalks and kind of complete the safe routes to school project. And, uh, a lot of these grant funding opportunities are a moving target, right? Uh, the, the requirements changed, the, the rules for procurement changes. And so we spent quite a bit of time getting ready and, and, and it's not wasted time completely. It does put us in a better spot for the next cycle. But, uh, you know, had we had this available to us at the time, I, I feel like we could have got the specialized services we needed and got this grant application, uh, submitted uh, for the current cycle. And so. Yeah, I think, I think Kevin covered it pretty well. We have the two ER projects, um, the Hartley Street Culvert and the, the culvert that goes under Main Street here by Soper Reese. It took, it took months to find one engineering firm, uh, to, to even return our call. Uh, because of the federal requirements.
I think, I think months is being judicious too. It was, it was, yeah. We, we did at least three cycles of RFPs for, to try and.
Correct. And, and the Forbes Creek study. And I mean, fortunately enough, we have both of those engineering firms are part of the fifteen that have submitted that are, that are super specialized. And so to have them, you know, in the, on speed dial, ready to go, i- i- is invaluable for, uh, positioning ourselves to apply for that funding or particularly with the federal, federal requirement jobs.
Good.
Is there a sun, sunset date on the list?
These are, I believe, were two years with the option of a third. In my, remember that correctly. I think we're, we're seeking that these would be two-year contracts and I think there's an option for a third year.
Nick, do we have anyone online?
Uh, we have people online, but their hands are not raised.
No hands raised. Okay, no one in the room? Any final comments or emotion?
There's nothing further, Madam Mayor. I move, we authorize the city manager to execute the on-call professional service agreements with the fifteen contractors identified in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Council Communications? Jenny?
Um, while I never worked for Margaret, I would like to point out, I actually did spell her name correctly. I was panicking when I.
I thought so, yeah.
And it made me think of Kelly telling me it's I before E unless you're Portuguese. Other than that, I have no comments.
Okay, good. I thought I was like, had spelled it wrong forever.
No, it's correct. It was my panic attack.
Chief?
Yeah, I just want to report the automated license play readers that you approved us to move forward with. Um, earlier this year, all of the, uh, cameras that your council approved are in now. The past couple of weeks, we're already getting hits on them, uh, we're, we're, we've solved a couple of cases, a few cases. Two quick examples, um, one was a stolen vehicle from out of the area that we got hits on. They found it at Safeway as the guy was starting to load almost nine hundred dollars in stolen groceries in the.
Wow.
So we got the car, we got an arrest, we got all the groceries back.
So annoying.
So that was one. And then.
You guys are paying.
Saturday or Sunday, we, we got a, uh, armed robbery vehicle out of another county. It was, uh, in our jurisdiction and it had hit our cameras a couple of days before. We didn't find it that day. Found it a couple of days later, so.
Wow.
They are proving beneficial, I think, as we learn the system and, and give more use out of it. So we're gonna, we're gonna solve a lot more cases. The, uh, as I mentioned, ours are in. The school district, uh, is funding and adding two more cameras to our system. And those cameras will be at, uh, both sides of the school. And those will be in by the end of this month.
Great.
We, we have all, all entrances, in, ingress, egress, we have, have everything covered in the city at this point.
We, we have a camera, I believe, at every ingress and egress. However, in the future, we would want to look at adding cameras to make sure that we have, we can catch both entry and exit at every location. We started with eight cameras, with council approved and, um, we're doing as best we can to try to capture all that data. But really the best situation is to have, have cameras in both directions at all those locations, so.
If you're, if you're wondering, council member, we, we beat this up pretty good at management meeting to see if there was a way we could get in and out of the city without getting by the cameras. A little.
It's called a both. Some tried harder than others.
Schools there at Howard and, and Lang, that, that's a good one.
Right.
People would use, so.
Both sides there are gonna be covered.
Yeah.
With the schools.
I saw one on Forbes today and I was a little surprised to see that one there, but hey, wherever you think.
Well, we also need some that are more in, inside of town. At thorough fairs where we can, we can further track the vehicles. If they, for example, hit on a, a street like Eleventh or Lakeport Boulevard. We want to try to also capture them again to try to find out what direction they're going. So that's why you'll see a couple of them in, inside town.
Great.
Anything else, chief?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor Matina. I have nothing further to report.
Don't you want to tell us all about your brand new sidewalks that look amazing?
The Hartley Street project is going great and the sidewalks do look great. Uh, it's, it's almost complete. There are still a few little issues hanging out there. And I guess if we're gonna talk about the projects that are going on, I am super excited to finally see construction fence around the site of Natural High and the new park.
I feel like we need to give you a woo-hoo.
Yeah.
And we finished the Forbes Street Micro Surface to include all the entrances down to the lakefront as well as the police department parking lot and the parking lot at West Side Park Phase One.
And the community center.
And the community.
It looks beautiful.
E before I community.
Yes. Unless you're Portuguese.
Thanks, Ron. Kelly?
Nothing to report. Paul?
No report.
Nick?
No report.
And David is out.
It's no report.
What, what was your name again?
Alex.
Alex. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Don't call her Lexi, you pissin'. Don't call her Lexi, you pissin'.
That's true. Okay.
Conversation.
I, I was just going to add in there. I just, a, a big shout out to all of city staff. I mean, as this, this um, as the unaudited financial showed, I mean, we, we're, we are still plugging away uh, with the staff that we have and uh, getting a lot of big things done. Uh, you know, there's, and that's really evident uh, this month in regards to the, the micro surfing project that just finished. We're going to be getting a couple of new bathrooms uh, that are going to be delivered. We, we assume that they would happen all at the same time. Uh, so we always anticipated that everything was going to happen right here at the same time, but that, those should be coming here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and uh, you know, the big one for sure being uh, breaking ground and, and getting the, the park project moving. Um, I'll be reaching out to you. I think we definitely want to do a um, breaking ground event with council that we're going to discuss um, here, but we will certainly save the big party for when this is uh, with, when this is done. I think the contract provides for 150 days uh, for the project. So kind of a six-month time period. Uh, we're hopeful that there will be breaks in that schedule to accommodate maybe some moisture that falls from the sky at some point. Um, but we're, we're well on track um, uh, to get this uh, project moving. Uh, we have requested, um, we, we have a, we have a very detailed um, project schedule that um, you would be mad if I shared with you and saw the whole Gantt chart. So we have requests from them to kind of put together a more higher level sort of schedule that certainly will share with council and uh, we'll definitely get a communications piece out because I'm sure that the public's going to be very interested on, on how that uh, how the park project's going to progress moving forward. So we'll, we'll get that out in short order. Um, those are all the ones you can see, but all the other departments are doing um, a number of different um, big things as well. We've got a number of different things moving through community development that are exciting. Um, and, and in, in all of our departments. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to staff and keeping that moving forward.
And it's listed in the CDD quarterly report if you're very interested. Cause it A include Kmart.
Yes. Very excited to have a development application in for the reuse of the Kmart site that by far and away, we've been pushing on that for uh, a couple of years now. Um, and it's, it's very exciting to see that, that moving forward.
Good. It seems like more than a couple, but.
Feels like it's been a while. Yes.
Been a while. Council member for you?
Um, I don't have much tonight, but I did walk on the uh, the Hartley sidewalk. Uh, I did wait until the concrete cured. Um, I did not scratch my name in it, although I was tempted, but uh, I didn't. Um, I thought that was pretty cool. It was pretty funny that Stacy's been supervising it from her house. And, and I, and I've heard that she has made appearances and um, I wanted to say that I was out doing a job uh, this afternoon on Forbes and got to watch him do the micro surfacing and uh, and it's pretty neat. And I've had yesterday, I had driven on the, the portion that the southern half that had already been done. So um, yeah, I'm really happy with the, the way it looks and the way it turned out. Um, yeah. Kudos to those who have planned it and uh, made sure that it, that this project happened and ensured that we're saving money by spending money here, uh, keeping our, our roads in good condition.
Councilmember Green?
I have a funny story where I was in Staples the other day and somebody picked up a printer, just walked outside and we all stood there and watched her until the clerk said, hey, yo printer, uh, watched the truck pull up. The lady puts it in the back, they roll off. And I was done shopping. So what the heck? You know me, I'm going to go look. I tracked them down. I watched them go right across the street. I watched them stop at a house, pull out the printer. The lady jumps out and then the truck takes off. And I'm talking to UCAEPD throughout this whole thing. And it was very exciting and gave them the address where the goods were and got a call back from a very nice desk sergeant and said, well, they're probably not going to press charges, but if they do, I'll call back. And sure enough, didn't get a call back. So Kenny, you know, you can catch somebody red-handed ripping stuff off, phone in the address of where the goods are. And this is the state where we're at. And part of me was upset at the time because Mr. Do-good citizen, you want to do right. And then part of me said, well, if the big dogs in the room, the big retailers have come to peace with the idea that if it's not fell any weight, um, they're not going to press charges. Um, I guess that's kind of, we, we have to come to peace with it now. So I do want to pass along my compliments to you, cut UCAEPD for their uh, professional outreach. They did respond very quickly, but they didn't end up responding because the store didn't ask them to. How weird is that? And I don't know why I shared that story, but it was, it's just, you talked about Prop 47 a lot. We, we have issues with it. And it was just like, it's, it stunned me. And I don't know what to make of that. Uh, but on council business, uh, I, I want to thank you all for your patience. We've done a lot of good things here in the past few months or years that have been, it's only been a couple of years. It seems much longer than that. Uh, and I'm not technically allowed to say anything uh, that would indicate anything is going to happen, but if it does in the near future, um, I want you to know how much I have appreciated my time here. I appreciate each and every one of you, George.
Maybe.
Uh, I do appreciate how hard our, our staff works. And even when I'm barking from time to time, I hope you know it's uh, I'm doing what I can do to make the city a better place too. And uh, so I apologize for some of the grumpiness and the outburst, but it comes from a, a good place. I like to think. And I hope we will stay in touch uh, as things change, uh, because the one constant in life is change. So thank you so much for putting up with me.
You really didn't have a choice.
Kenny, we did pension reform. Don't get me started.
Councilmember Spur?
No report.
Pro Tem?
Yeah, I had an interesting thing. I, I just had a conversation. I went down to visit my grandson. I don't know if everybody knew, but he went through um, he had trans grand artery disease and his two arteries were switched and he had surgery when he was eight days old. And then about um, a year later, they fixed everything and took the sutures off and he just got his last report that all of his vitals and all of his blood work and everything's great. So he's just going to be a regular, normal kid. But what I was going to comment on my way home from there, um, I went by the Oaks and I got pulled over for the first time. And I was just talking about that when I was at my sons, that I hadn't been pulled over in 40 years. And now I know why I got pulled over. The guy pulled me over on a horribly uh, curvy road and I pulled over and as I pulled over, I realized it was just a bunch of trash cans next to me. So I started to go forward. He goes, hey, whoa, whoa, whoa. I thought he was going to shoot me. Cause um, he thought I was going to pull out, but I was trying to make room for him. He says, no, no, I'm good. And then he told me he couldn't read my license plate because the light was out on it. And now I know why. I guess uh, uh, they have license plate readers in the Oaks or something because he couldn't read my license plate. So that's why he pulled me over. And I mean, that seemed like the most ludicrous thing. And it was like nine o'clock at night. And so uh, now having heard your stories, um, it makes a little more sense that maybe he thought I was, you know, getting away with a copier or something when I left.
Maybe you were driving Kenny speed.
Anyway, I just thought that was kind of interesting. After 40 years, I get pulled over for a license plate light. And I said, well, after all, this car is a 2003. I'm not proud. The light bulbs are pretty old. They're like 19 years old. So that's probably why I'll take care of it. You let me go. So it was good.
Well, that's good. Anything else?
No.
Uh, we recently had the Harvest Festival and Canoctide Challenge. There were a ton of people in town. Um, Main Street did a really good job on the Harvest Festival. There's um, ducks and races and um, it's really fun. Canoctide Challenge is supposedly the last year. I would love it if we could figure out how to bring a bunch of groups together and make that continue to happen. So if anybody has ideas of how we could maybe cooperate with a bunch of groups and keep it going. Um, cause it's been such a great event and there were a lot of sad faces that they were here for the last time to do the pedal around the puddle. So anyway, hopefully if someone has ideas.
The reason they're not doing it anymore?
Well, nobody wants to take it over. So um, Jennifer Strong's been doing it for years through um, Rotary.
Actually, one of the reasons why is because when you do 100 mile and a 60 mile and a 40 mile, you have to have voluminous numbers of rest stops.
Right.
And you have to incorporate, you know, the Vietnam veterans, the Lions, the Lionesses, the Kiwanis Club, the
To do all those.
To do all the rest stops and it's a tremendous amount of work. And quite frankly, now the one we did this year was, um, I think they were less than 25 mile. I think it was 15 and 25 and they got back early. It was real easy. We didn't have as many rest stops and, and it was, it was a really neat event and we catered it that day. And then we had to go to a wedding. So it was a good thing that ended early, but the thing was, is it, it was, it was really nice and compact, but the normal one that goes all the way up to Cobb Mountain and these riders need constant, um, you know, uh, stops, stops for, for liquid and so forth. So yeah, it's a very big job. Jennifer was going to do it for two years and I think she did it for almost 20, uh, with a couple of exceptions during COVID where they skipped it, but it's, it's a really big job. Matter of fact, that originally came from the chamber because the chamber couldn't do it, but all service clubs, like we got um, a donation from the Lions Club when they had their legacy project as they went defunct and there's very few public ser, I mean, uh, service clubs that are sticking around because a lot of people are, are not really um, interested spending too much time of their own time doing things like that. So it's really tough to get people to come out and do that. So that's the main reason why.
So did they ever think about getting um, like a nonprofit organization involved with it and help them do it?
They, they've tried a lot of.
Well, we've had all the nonprofits. As a matter of fact, we give out huge prizes.
Yeah.
We give out like, I think they get $5,000 for the best rest stop. And then they give 2,500 and then they give 1,500 and then they give a thousand. So they can get people like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scout. And they do a big theme and everything.
More like, I, I know somebody that's um, works in uh, for the ALS Alzheimer's thing. And uh, they put on a ride every.
That's why I'm throwing it out there. If you have ideas.
Stacy.
You know, like, let's keep it going. It's a great event.
It's a worthy event to.
A lot of people come from all over the place for that.
Keep it going.
Yeah. When, when Jennifer's done her report, you always see that they come from like hundreds of cities all over.
Yeah.
And most of the writers aren't even local. So it's a really great community service thing. And it showcases the iconic views of Canoctide from all over. It's just a really great event and it, it would be a really good community service project for something like, you know, Sutter or Venice Health or something like that. So that would be another avenue. But I, I think Jennifer is just like done, done. And she's also the district governor of Rotary, which has like, I don't know, close to 50 clubs. She has to visit every single, you know, like week, sometimes four or five. She has events every weekend. So she was really particularly done this year.
Yeah. Did you have one more thing?
Something you said because it, this event, uh, the, the one Lions Club that shut down, Kiwanis struggling, nonprofits in general are struggling in this county. And it was anecdotal to me, but it's, it's almost becoming a steady drumbeat. Uh, are, are they're struggling and they're failing. And we normally in November, we talk about no shave November, but I was, I was thinking if there's consensus, I don't know what we would do in terms of just an overview or report. But can we do a nonprofit November and just get a report to the council of is, is, are we seeing the same things? Because I, I do see uh, many of our nonprofit groups struggling to the point of near collapse. And um, uh, part of that is the aging of the people involved. Part of that is our community itself is not growing. Um, so between COVID and the natural aging processes and stuff like that, I don't know if we already have some countywide events or citywide events that we can celebrate our nonprofits, but also reach out to them directly and say, are you struggling? If so, what can we do to help? What we can, what can we do to rebuild the communities that made you strong nonprofits in the first place? And um, uh, if we, we can't do that during communications, right? But we can, we can give little ideas that if something like that were to come back, we would listen. Or somebody would listen, maybe not me, but I, I think it'd be a good idea to see how our nonprofits were doing.
And.
All right. Well, you might think that's it, but now we were going to go into closed session. Uh, conference with Real Property Negotiator, property address 445 North Main Street in Lakeport. Um, agency negotiators, city manager, negotiating party city of Lakeport and Lakeport Fire Protection District. Price and terms of payment. I'm going to recuse myself from this item. And that's it for now. We'll be back at a closed session.